Going, do we have everybody online? Is Counselor Hughes in council? Okay. Just give me one sec here. Okay, so I'm going to call the meeting to order for Monday, May 2, 2022. Attendance at the start of the meeting, and I should probably log on to Zoom as well. Give me two secs while I do that. But we have Counselor Hughes and Counselor Brmaski virtual, and everyone else is in chambers. So we have 100% attendance at the start of the meeting. Can I have a member of council make a motion to adopt the agenda? Thank you, Counselor Mackay. Go ahead.
That the May 2, 2022 agenda be adopted as presented?
All right. No one has any changes? Seeing none, I call for the vote. Sorry, I'm trying to log into the Zoom meeting. And was it, that was unanimous, I'm sure. Okay. Okay, the beginning of our agenda is always something fun to do, which is honoring some of our own staff today. It's Economic Development Week. Is that nationally or internationally? Looking up. Is it just provincial? Okay. Well, we want to, we want to be part of that. So I have a proclamation to read because I think everyone on this council would agree that economic development is super important to our municipality, as well as all municipalities, in order to become a sustainable community and not just, not just for our tax base to shift it over from the, from the rez to the non-res, but also for jobs and a quality of life here in our community. So I've got some dignitaries here to accept the proclamation. I've got Shelley Nickel from the Chamber Commerce. We also have Gary Wetch from the Chamber Commerce. I got Brian Stewart from NABE with us. And we also have Sean McCauley and Christian Benson from the city to come and get a picture. Are you coming down too, Patricia? Okay. So let me read this, because we're going to get a picture in a sec. So yeah, come on down here. So whereas the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers. And whereas for almost 50 years, Economic Developers Alberta has been leading the economic development network committed to advancing the profession by providing resources, professional development, and networking opportunities. And whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for our communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to assist the next generation of new businesses. And whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including local chambers of commerce and community-based champions of small business. And whereas economic developers endeavor to participate in the development of vibrant communities. And finally, whereas economic developers work in the city of St. Albert. Now therefore, on behalf of council and the citizens of St. Albert, I, Kathy Heron, Mayor of the City of St. Albert, do hereby proclaim the week of May 9 to 13, 2022, as Economic Development Week here in the city of St. Albert. So congratulations to everyone, and thank you for what you do. Let's get a quick picture down below, and we'll, I don't know if chamber, if NABE, or even our own staff want to say a few words, but you're always welcome to.
I'd like to acknowledge the leadership of the city in making this proclamation, recognizing economic development is the lifeline of our community. Thank you very much. And thanks for me being a dignitary.
And no one else wants to say anything? We're good? Okay. Yeah, exactly. Get Kermit the Frog papers. Okay. Open Zoom. Okay, now I'm getting onto the Zoom meeting finally. Okay. So we have two registered speakers. We have the Public School Board who's coming to present. And we also have Brian Sutherland, who wants to talk about operative provincial policing. So we'll just go in the order that they registered. So the school board was first. And who's online with us? Just want to make sure. Do we know who's online? Sorry. All right, I see Crimson there. Oh, and I see, oh, the St. Albert Public School Board, Boardroom. So Crimson, I hate putting you on the spot, but do you want to introduce who is presenting today?
Hi there, it's actually trustee Christie Rouse in the room. And so I am very proud to be Crimson's doppelganger. But joining us today online is Superintendent Crimson Sumners, and fellow trustees Vice Chair Stanley Harum, and new trustees John Allen and Cheyenne Lavelle Kraus. Regrets today from Chair Kim Armstrong. And also with me here from the St. Albert Public Schools Division Office is Associate Superintendent of Finance Michael Brenice. And Economic Development Week is a nice segue into what is also Education Week in the province. And we are in the business of educating and developing our future leaders and those who will take the, take the lead of what path we lay for economic development now. And so we are pleased to present our capital plan for this year that continues to hold a priority of high school space for students within St. Albert. St. Albert Public Schools is very lucky to currently be educating nearly 9,000 students. And that growth within our schools is thanks to a very attractive city that we live in and thanks to a city council that has made really great opportunities and attractive, that are attractive for many young families. And so many young families are wanting to, to lay their roots in St. Albert. And so over the past number of years, we have set records with kindergarten enrollment. And this year was no exception. In September of 2021, there was over 625 kindergarten students registered in St. Albert Public Schools. We are eventually going to need to house those in high school. And that is really evidenced by our grade seven to nine enrollment over the past five years has increased over 15%. So we've, you'll know that there is the replacement of Paul Kane High School slated to open this year. And it's going to alleviate some of those enrollment pressures. However, in anticipation of that school opening, we did see increased enrollment already this year. And that is, will certainly continue as these current junior high cohorts are moving up the ranks. Phase two of our capital plan of the priority for high school space is that we are seeking a brand-new 650-student high school in Aaron Ridge North. And that is an exploration of an unsolicited P3 an unsolicited P3 partnership with Landrex that we have been exploring. And the province is continuing to work with us on that. Phase three, that would also alleviate some of the pressures would be an expansion and modernization of the existing Velrose Composite High School. Priority number two, it would be for a new 900-student school in the west end of the city. So there's presently a school site allocated for Riverside. And that really remains our only option right now in terms of if we were awarded a school, that would be the only place we can really feasibly put one. And then, of course, with continued enrollment and aging infrastructure is our third priority, which would be to modernize and/or add on to existing schools. And we also need to modernize and/or replace our relocatable classrooms, which would be known as modular classrooms or sometimes portables, which can be added on to schools that are existing. Or in some cases, as you will have seen, if you're familiar with the Lower Sea Hole school site, there's several relocatable classrooms that were added on to Lower Sea Hole, which came on stream as a K-6 in 2017. We added the Joseph M. Dempsey School in September of 2019, that is presently a K-9 school that at maximum capacity will hold 900 students. It is really important that we have school sites that are of an appropriate size, that should we be awarded a school to meet student need. There are additional considerations, such as the addition of those portable spaces and the opportunity for partnerships, which we really are keen to continue to explore within the city and with the city of St. Albert. There are several regional examples of schools that are in partnership with community organizations, including Sherwood Park with their Emerald Hills Leisure Center attached to Archbishop Jordan High School, or the Lakeland Ridge and Holy Spirit Schools connected and adjacent to the Trillium Center in Sherwood Park, not to mention also in Red Deer, where the Colacut Center is housed right in between both the public and Catholic high schools. So obviously, school sites are a large factor of what a family considers in their decision to locate and lay their roots in St. Albert. They're a huge investment from the province. And the physical location and, and the placement of those schools is very important, not only for distribution of students, but also for effective urban planning. And if we have additional employees in our schools, they most likely will be keen to also reside in St. Albert, which will lead to generation of additional property tax revenue. And St. Albert Public School Division happens to be one of the largest employers in the city of St. Albert with over 900 employees. We'd also like to comment on the importance that the land that is transferred from the city to the school divisions ultimately meets the needs of a school over its entire lifecycle. So it's important to have more space at, from the outset, rather than attempting to try and, and come up with creative ways to use that space that may have been limited in the original plan. We've touched on relocatable classrooms here. Also important to note that there are over 100 relocatable classrooms that house over 2,200 students in, within St. Albert Public Schools. Thirty-nine of those are over 30 years old. And of those, 25 of them are over 40 years old. So it's important to be evergreening and replacing those to have safe environments for our students to learn in. A little bit of history, super.
Just give you a heads up, there's only one minute left in the 10 minutes allocated. So I just want to make sure we get through what's, what you think is the most important.
Thank you, Mayor Heron. We would just quickly like to touch on the existing school site in Oakmont and the history there that it originally was allocated to the Greater St. Albert Public School, or Greater St. Albert Catholic School Board, rather. And in 2015, that division relinquished their entitlement to that school site when they opted instead to place their newly awarded school that became Sister Alphonse Academy, also in Jensen Lakes, and wanted to be in that high-growth area.
Okay, Christie, I do, time is up. And I, I hate, I honestly, I hope you know me well enough that I hate doing this, but I did, I have to cut people off just because I need to be fair with every presenter. So if we could just get to the really meet, if, of course, we're meeting again right away as well with our joint school board thing. So we can probably carry some of this into that conversation. But is there anything you really want to get through to us today?
We would really like to underscore the importance of working together with the city for identifying school sites that can be allocated to meet the needs of all of the school divisions that have schools in, in St. Albert. And that we would also like to highlight that there is not presently a school board that is allocated the Oakmont site. However, the Francophone Board would be served really quite well by that site. And so we look forward to discussing this further in our joint meeting next week. And we thank you for your time. And we'll see you next week.
Sorry about that. And, you know, if you could actually even get us a copy of the slides, some of the ones that we missed, and maybe even through the questioning, there might be more opportunities to get into something. So I'm going to open it up to council, if they have any questions. Counselor Hughes and Counselor Bermansky, do you have anything to start off, off with? I don't see Counselor Bermansky. All right, I have one in, in the House here. I'm seeing no questions. Yeah. Okay. Well, go ahead.
No, I just want to, it's, it's Counselor Mackay here. I just want to say thank you for presenting. I, I guess I do have a question. I'm more curious. I mean, it seems like the Public School Board presents to us, and I'm very interested in that. Is there something that's mandated in the School Act to present your capital plans? Or is this just an initiative that Public School Board has taken on?
This was something that previous boards of trustees have undertaken, and we wanted to continue that tradition. Thank you.
But you are the only school board that does this.
Yep. I just want to say thank you for the information.
I have a quick question about Paul Kane. We're all very excited for the opening and can't wait to be there. My question for you is the old facility, when it comes down, is there an opportunity to bring the community together? I keep, I keep thinking those that have graduated, you know, some of the alumni, to be part of it. I, you know, I've heard ideas that we could pass around a hard hat and a sledgehammer, or people could take home a brick as a memory. I honestly think it's, it, there's a lot of memories after many-year graduating class, me being one of them, that there would be some that would like to participate. I don't know if you've had conversations about how that looks.
I think that I will let Associate Superintendent Brenice speak to that. And I'm sure he has some thoughts on the O H and S logistics of that. Thank you.
But I got to drive a backhoe to take down the blind big pipe. I'm sure we could figure something out.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, absolutely. We're looking at some opportunities, like you said, whether some, some bricks could be salvaged for people that would be of interest. For sure, there would be tours of the new school. Oddly enough, and I don't think I'm sharing any secrets here, the RCP has also asked for some, if they could do some training inside the old school, if that, if there's a day or two in between when we move out and decommissioning begins, because they'd also see that as a prime opportunity to do training in a real-life school as well. So we're trying to work with the contractor to make those kind of opportunities available, but nothing has been finalized as of yet. Thank you.
Okay. It could be a good fundraiser for the grad class of that year. I, I would pay for a brick. So. Anything else? I see no more questions from my council. So we will, is it just, is it next week already that we're having our joint meeting? All right. Well, we'll, we'll see you all then. If you could send us a copy of the slides, that would be fantastic. Right.
Will be. Thank you.
Okay. And then I don't know if there's any business arising from that. But first of all, I would like to go to Mr. Sutherland to, he wants to make a, some comments about Alberta Provincial Police proposal. I did ask him before the meeting started if he wanted to do it right at 2:00 or wait till we got to the agenda item, but he's chosen to do it right now. So we'll have to try to not get into the details of the conversation until we get to the agenda. So I'll just kind of watch the questions as we go. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Your Worship. And thank you for, to Counselor Jolly for giving me a heads up as coming. This to me, and I'm going to try and speak to you, not at you, this to me is like a, is a major issue that's coming, coming forward here. And it seems to be sort of sneaking in the back door through the province. I'm not sure, I'll give you a little background myself. I'm a retired RCP officer. I did 35 years in the RCMP. My dad was an RCMP member. I have four uncles that were RCMP members. I have five cousins that were RCMP members. Some say we just couldn't find employment anywhere else. But, and I have my son is a member in Morenville right now. And then there's another relative. So we have close to 85 years of continued service in the RCP. We have a fair amount of knowledge about it. This whole thing about the RCMP and the provincial police first rose it to the, to the forefront in, during the, the, when Mr. Klein was the premier of the province. The justice minister at the time had a personal feelings about the RCMP and they pushed forward. This is where our current sheriff's department came from. They purchased land down in, by Fort McLeod. They were going to build a big training school down there. Eventually, the sheriffs took over traffic. They took over prisoner escorts, which was a good thing. I don't have any objection to that. And eventually, they became, the goal at the time, stated goal by the justice minister at the time under Mr. Klein, was they would eventually become the provincial police force. Then Mr. Stelmack became into power and he shut that down. He was very pro-CMP, and it ended right there. Now it's come up again. Didn't really come up during the election, but then after the election, Mr., the, the current premier has, has come forward with some information and saying that he wants to move forward with it. My reason for coming here today is there seems to be a lot of information out there that is not exactly true, or it's misleading information. The premier was at a RMA council meeting a while back. He spoke to the fact that, that if they had the RCMP or their own provincial police force, they could set the priorities for the, for provincial policing for the province every year. In fact, they do that. They have 100% say in the policing priorities for the province. I know as a detached commander in four different detachments, one thing that happened to me every year was that I was, they, they came to me, my boss, the CEO of the division, came to me and said, these are the priorities, whether it be domestic abuse, property crimes, rural crime, whatever the issues were. They came to me and said, as a detached commander, these are your priorities, and you will respond to us every three months with how you're achieving those priorities. And I know that would report it back. So it's like this statement comes out there, we're going to have all this more power. It, it can't be because you have 100% of the power already. They talk about, you know, there's, there's hiring locals. You know, it's a great idea, a great concept to think about it. But you stop and think of somebody in Forsby or Spirit River or these small communities, there are very few people from those communities that you're going to hire that are going to want to stay in those communities. I've worked with members who have been posted to their home provinces and then gone back to the hometowns. It doesn't work out. It simply doesn't work out. It's great if you're in a place like St. Albert, Red Deer, maybe you could do that. You can get a guy to come into St. Albert, you can police the city of St. Albert. I can tell you, the worst thing you want to do is pull over your high school buddy for impaired driving, right? It makes it very, very difficult. During this RMA council meeting, the premier made mention, they know all the bad guys in town. I can tell you, that's not always true either. You know, if you're in a community where there are bad guys, if you happen to know one or two guys that you grew up with in school, yes, for sure, you're going to know those guys. But as a member who did his whole service in small towns, all my entire services in small towns, I sat a lot of times at hockey rinks, talked to guys. They say, well, you know, I heard this guy got charged with this or whatever. I had no idea that that guy was a bad guy. It's not always a fact is what I'm trying to say then. Just because you're from a community, if you're from St. Albert, the chances that you're going to know all the bad guys in St. Albert aren't true.
Mr. Sutherland, just to be fair, I, I'd like to give people a warning. So you have about 43 seconds.
Okay, I'll go quickly. Another thing is that, that when members go to these small towns, five-man detachments, six-man detachments, 10-man detachments, within three days, four days, they know the bad guys in those communities. So I know council's going to be debating this, and I could go on for a long period of time. But they, there was a recent mention by the justice minister that staffing comes out of Ottawa. It doesn't come out of Ottawa. All the postings in Alberta are posted in, from Alberta right out of Edmonton headquarters. So again, I just want you to be cautious that there's a lot of misinformation out there. And as you debate this issue later on today, that you keep that in mind. And I know there are a lot of people that are still pro-RCP. And I'd be happy to ask any questions if anybody has any concerns.
Awesome. And we, we might have some questions. And the policing is later on in the agenda, but you would, you would have an opportunity to, we, we stream our meetings and then they're on YouTube forever. So you can go back, you can either watch it later on today live or tomorrow, whatever you want, watch our conversations. Counselor Jolly has a quick question.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just my really quick question is, do you have thoughts on the, the statements that a provincial police force will not cost municipalities any more than, than the current system?
I, you know, I do have a comment on that. I mean, clearly, all you have to do is look at 300 B.C. right now to see what a disaster that's been. They're almost $20 million over budget. They're behind the times getting their, their police force up and running. There's even people there that are signing petitions now saying like, we didn't think about these costs. And, you know, the, the, the cost in Alberta, I talked to a couple ministers there and they threw some facts around. But the bottom line is that it's going to cost you far more to have provincial police force, because there are a lot of sort of intangibles that the RCMP supplies. There's federal money that comes into the RCMP that goes for federal policing within the province. They're still policing those people within the province. And then there are, is the provincial money that the government gives. Well, right away, the provincial money is gone. The federal government has said that as soon as you go provincial police, we're cutting off that federal money for provincial policing. How do you make that up? You have to make that up. And there's no way you can make that up and say it's going to cost us less. I, I don't remember what the amount is, but I think it's in the millions and millions of dollars that, that federal government provides to the RCMP or to the province to provide policing. There's, there's also federal funds. If you're in a community where there are First Nations communities, the federal government provides funding to those communities. Like, I'll give you an example. It's not in Alberta, but when I was posted in Saskatchewan, the city of North Balfour, which is surrounded by six or seven First Nations communities, receives funding from the federal government through the provincial contract, because there's a large First Nations populations within the community of North Balfour. And that's how they pay for the cost of policing there. So that's, that would, those types of situations, maybe with Haskin, those would be, would be gone as well. So to answer your question really shortly, it would be far more expensive, based on my knowledge of the RCMP and having worked there for 35 years, to, to have a provincial, a provincial police force, to pay for all those unknown costs, you know, wrecked cars, lawsuits, everything like that that comes up, that's now funded out of the big pool.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. And, and what they've said is it wouldn't cost municipalities more, but the loss of thirty percent will cost our Albertans in general through their taxes. Any other questions? I'm seeing none. So honestly, we appreciate your engagement on this issue. We're going to have a good conversation about it later on today. But the point of actually putting this on the agenda was to get some conversation going in our community. So I really appreciate you kicking that off.
I appreciate it because I just think that the conversation hasn't taken place out there yet. It's good to see that you're doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, of course, is business arising. We'll wait till we get to the agenda item on provincial policing to discuss that, Mr. Sutherland's presentation. But does anyone have any questions for administration on the public school board presentation? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to consent agenda. So the only thing that I'm aware of that has been pulled off of consent is nine point two. Is that correct? Yes. Okay. So can I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Council Jolly.
The recommendations in the following agenda reports to be approved. Six point one, regular council meeting minutes of April nineteen, twenty twenty two. Eight point one, budget adjustment. Eight point two, service and service levels inventory update. Eight point four, city of Edmonton annexation project. And nine point one, bylaw seventeen, twenty twenty two, Aron Ridge North area structure plan and twelfth amendment and bylaw eighteen, twenty twenty two, Aron Ridge North eleventh redistricting, redistricting, land use bylaw, schedule A amendment, first reading.
Awesome. Okay. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. Okay. So next on our agenda was minutes from April nineteenth, passed on consent. Next up is a recommendation from Council Jolly's committee, the Community Growth and Infrastructure Standing Committee on the Ten Year Growth Plan. Is on page twenty two of our agenda package. So Council Jolly, I'll let you just maybe read the recommendations in. Obviously, the first section are the submissions from Councilor Kilik that we will split out. And, and Councilor Kilik, I'll let you, when we get to them, you can have the mic and, and give us your thoughts. And then we'll allow, normally it's a notice of motions and I would get you to read it. Questions, and then we'll have time for questions of staff. Then we'll bring it back. We'll vote on each one separately, just so you know how we're going to do it. Do you mind reading them all in first though, Council Jolly?
So, sorry, you want me to?
The whole thing.
Like even Council Kilik's motion?
Or, or do you want me to let him do it? It's up to you.
I, yeah, I can read the whole thing.
Yeah, go ahead. So I'm just doing it because it's your committee.
Starting with the, that fire thirty three fire training facility, okay. So that fire zero three three fire training facility be removed from the twenty twenty three to twenty thirty two municipal growth capital plan provided as an attachment to the May two twenty twenty two agenda report entitled Ten Year Growth Plan removals, the growth plan. And then two, so these are all Council Kilik's motions that serve zero zero eight service place fitness expansion be removed from the growth plan. Three, that DARP zero zero three Civic Plaza be removed from the growth plan. Four, that DARP zero zero six Perron Street pedestrian improvements be removed from the growth plan. Five, that DARP zero zero seven Grandin Road improvement be removed from the growth plan. Six, that DARP zero one one St. Anne Street pedestrian improvements be removed from the growth plan. Seven, that DARP zero one four St. Thomas Street media improvements be removed from the growth plan. Eight, that DARP zero one five Tache Street Green Corridor be removed from the growth plan. Nine, that administration update the twenty twenty three to twenty thirty two municipal growth capital plan to remove the project charters provided as an attachment to the May two twenty twenty two agenda report entitled Previously Distributed Ten Year Growth Plan Update. And ten, that administration update the twenty twenty three to twenty thirty two municipal growth capital plan to include the project briefs provided as an attachment to the May two twenty twenty two agenda report titled Previously Distributed Growth Plan Update. And eleven, that the revised twenty twenty three to twenty thirty two municipal capital plan be included in the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty five business plan and budget document to be provided to council in the fall of twenty twenty two, along with funding recommendations guided by the capital prioritization matrix.
Thank you so much, Council Jolly. I'll take you off the hook for two secs because I'm going to turn over to Council Kilik. So Council Kilik, the first one, it's been read into the record, but before I actually accept it, I'll open up for questions. But I'm going to go to you first for a little bit of your thoughts about why I would like to remove this one.
So the, thank you, Madam Mayor. On the fire training facility, the proposed plan did not have the land costs shown in it. So it was a business case that only had the building facility. And yet any one of our other proposals for any facility would always have the land costs or land opportunity costs. So it seemed to me that the fire training facility, as proposed in the, the ten year budget, was incomplete from that perspective and didn't give a, and without the land costs, it would be very difficult to calculate payback and all of the other items around how you would do training, what other alternatives would exist, including existing training. The other opportunity that I saw of removing it was that by hiring additional staff, we'll have more staff on hand to be able to do kind of an overlap training that, with our existing facilities that, that we use. And this could cut down on potential overtime. So it just seemed from those two opportunities, one is a risk in the business case of no land costs, the other one with staff coming on board, that, and a way to schedule those staff for training and forego some of the potential overtime costs. It just seemed to me that this would be a lower priority for us. Certainly not to take anything away from our fire services. They do a great job for the community, but this one just seemed an opportunity to take out of the budget.
Okay, awesome. Counsel, just so you know, I did have a conversation with Mr. Hiltz earlier today. You know, it was my understanding that we were given a deadline to submit these other suggestions for removal. And we were given the deadline so we could have a bit of a backgrounder. There were no backgrouners for any of these. So, Mr. Hiltz, I've asked you to have staff here because it's very hard for us to say yea or nay to these without hearing from you and your staff. So do you want to talk to this or do you have one Everett to go?
Yes, your worship. My understanding that administration would have no issue with removing this from the ten year growth plan, but I'll allow Mr. Cook to elaborate on, on that, on that position.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, and through the mayor to, to Councilor Kilik, to your points, if I may. Yes, administration is not opposed to having this removed from our ten year capital growth plan. However, there is a need for a dedicated facility in the future. There's options though that I feel need to explore, be explored as we move forward, looking at a dedicated training facility, which include partnering with regional fire departments to deliver such a facility or to create such a facility, reducing costs to the city of St. Albert. But then also too, to look at the staffing costs. For example, dedicated staff to operate or facilitate the train center. And of course, that's going to be dependent on the operating model, which would need to be explored. And then also too, is the availability of equipment to be used at the dedicated training facility so that we're not taking frontline equipment out of service, thus impacting the services we provide to, to St. Albert residents. If I could, just, just to two points, it was identified in the original project charter that land would not need to be purchased as it's already available. Unfortunately, this charter was created before I came to the city, but I understand that to be the lands that surrounds the forthcoming Station Four on the north side of St. Albert. I understand there's more discussions need to be had in that area. There's other plans or some options for that area as well to be, for the new fire hall to be shared with. Those are discussions that would be, have to be had. And then also too, as our service grows, we're current, or as our service grows, so too does our need for a dedicated training facility, again, bringing it back in the future. One of the requirements of a firefighter is to remain competent at the skills for which we possess. And that competency must be demonstrated either on an active fire ground or in training once every year or every two years, depending on what the city of St. Albert is comfortable setting. So we would be required, or pardon me, we would be having a good look at this charter and bringing it back again in the future. Again, wanting to home in on a few more of those details so we can provide council a better, a better cost analysis so that we know exactly what we'll be spending or at least a lot closer to the amount we would be spending should it be approved. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, opening up to council questions, Council Jolly.
Yeah, my question was just about whether administration supports this. I thought they did.
Okay, yeah. Council Broadhead.
I, well, I got a question. If, if, if administrators, if administration supports this, why wasn't it on the list?
That was my question too.
Yeah, through, through your worship and to council, council and Council Broadhead. Unfortunately, just with timing and, and our fire chief being new, it was missed. So we were going to take this off in, in budget for twenty twenty three. However, this presented us an, an opportunity to bring this forward now. So it was just, it was basically just timing.
Fair enough.
All right. I see Council Bremask, you have your hand up as well.
I just had one question, but it's not relative if we're taking it off the budget anyhow. But I just want to know if there's opportunity to train firefighters from outside the region or just local.
I think the plan was to try to open it up to the region, but I'll let Mr. Cook answer.
Excellent. Thank you. Through your worship to Council Bremaski. Yes, any training facility, we would have the opportunity to, to rent that training facility out on a cost recovery or cost plus basis. Should we go down this avenue, that would be part of the business case we would explore, which would help us understand the impacts of staffing and of course, the equipment that's required. There are other options in the region right now. However, looking at a new facility, that is something we would take into account.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, I'm seeing no more hands up, so I don't see any more questions. So if you, do you have anything further, Council Kilik? It's kind of like closing arguments, but.
Just thank you, Everett, for the backgrounder. I had based my comments on the original project charter that we had received a couple of weeks back. And based on that, that was the current state of the information. So I appreciate the update and think with administration support, that's good enough.
Okay. Let's call for a vote on this one. Oh. Oh, no, we're just doing one at a time. Yep, we have to. We'll probably keep, what is it, nine? Nine, ten, eleven, we can do together, but the Council Kiliks will do separately. Sorry. Yep. Okay, voting's closed. And then it passes unanimously. All right. So the next one that Council Kilik is proposing is service place fitness expansion. So do you have any thoughts that you want to let council know on this one?
Uh, yeah, just in, in opening comments, again, using the backgrounder that we received a couple of weeks ago, noted in our capital growth plan that it was five hundred thousand dollars to do the planning this year and nearly six million for next year for twenty twenty four. And my rationale for bringing this one forward was that we could use the funds for, rather than expanding its service, we could use the funds for our future community recreation facility. And it would be a very significant undertaking to expand service in its footprint. So that piece and saving the money for a future, when we have the permanent wreck, larger wreck facility would be better. As well as I think we've seen growth in, in other businesses, private businesses within the city that can serve most of the needs of anybody else that needs to, to go to fitness centers outside of service. So this was an opportunity to bring this one forward.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hiltz and Diane's, I don't want to put you on spot at all on your opinion on, on any of these. I think what we need from staff is obviously answer questions and see if we're maybe not, if there's something unintended or impacts that we're not thinking of, we would like to hear that. If you agree, then that, that's good to hear, like we did with, with Everett's comments. But my question to Diane, because we've talked about this at length for probably eight years now. And I got to admit, I did not go back and read the charter. Is, is this, is this six million dollars more than just the change rooms?
To the mayor, thank you for the question. So this charter is to look at the change room expansion. So when we first built Service Place, the change rooms and the fitness center were undersized. And so this charter was to address that community response that we had in terms of expanding the change rooms and just reconfiguring some of the space up there. So it has been a bit of a placeholder in terms of having this charter in our ten year capital plan as something that we would, could aspire to do down the road. With the community amenity site coming on, of course, the plan was to do the planning for the community amenity site first and then go back and address whether or not this is still a need in the community.
Okay. So this was proposed for this year, for design this year and then the six million investment the following year?
So, yes, through, through the mayor, to Council Kilik. So that was in the current ten year capital plan. What will happen though is our staff will bring forward twenty twenty three capital charters. And this charter will be pushed out until we have further clarity on the community amenity site. And so when, when you see this charter come back in twenty three, it will be pushed out to twenty four, twenty five. Won't be looked at for funding in the twenty three budget again, until we have more clarity on the community amenity site.
Okay, that's good to know. And then my last question is, the fitness piece of Service Place, is, is it still competitive in the marketplace and, and generating? I've, I've heard that that's the only piece of Service Place that actually generates money, that actually offsets the operations. And we don't want to lose that because as Council Kilik said, gyms are a business and they can make money. So is it still making money for, for Service Place if you have that broken down? I'm not sure.
Yeah, to, to the mayor, definitely the fitness center is a key component of, of Service Place. It is part of the bundle of amenities that people buy as a membership or as, use as a drop in. It is important to the economic sustainability of that particular facility. We have known since we've, Service Place opened fifteen years ago, fitness has grown in the community and it has been a bit of a catalyst for fitness to grow in the community. The model at Service Place is very much about a family approach. So it is a very open fitness facility where we encourage all ages and demographics. And, and we do provide a varying kind of programming from, you know, health, health and, and fitness programming, wellness programming, youth learning to use fitness centers, a sport training as well. So it has quite a diverse market and target market in terms of who it attracts.
Council McKay.
Thank you. This one is, as being a past chair of the Service Place Task Force that did their review back in two thousand and eight, this is near and dear to my heart. So a question then, are we still seeing the, I mean, COVID, pre-COVID? We were still seeing about two hundred and eighty thousand visits a year that actually accessed and used the fitness facilities is, so that's pre-COVID. And we're looking at potentially once building that up. But we were able to keep it open with enhanced cleaning and enhanced, did, did we see a reasonable return on that or like was it generally accepted in the community?
To the mayor, to Council McKay, our fitness facility at Service Place has had a strong return since COVID. We were able to keep it open for most of the past two years. Of course, with some closures doing during provincial. Um, we were able to keep it open for most, um, of the past two years, of course, with some closures doing during provincial, um, regulations shutdowns. Um, and the, again, the, the incline back into fitness has been strong and continues to, to grow um, as people become more comfortable coming back to public facilities.
So, um, one thing that I was wondering, is there any other modernization of that facility since we, since 2008? There, has there been any enhancements to our fitness area? But re- realizing that the main issue that we identified when Service Place was first built was a inadequate, uh, uh, change room issue. Um, and we tried to address another, a number of ways. Has there been any other attempts? And I, I'll, I'll use the term that's in the back, uh, modernization. Has there been any of that going on since then?
Through the mayor to Council McKay, um, we have not done any major modifications, modernizations to Service Place. A lot of lifecycle work, um, a lot of, um, energy efficiency pieces have happened. Um, we, during COVID though, we did expand the fitness area into, uh, more of the lobby hallway area to just provide more space. Um, so we have done some internal modifications, but nothing structural.
Okay. Uh, Council Broadhead, you're up next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So what's, what's the implication of, of removing this growth plan charter? So, so the, what I heard you say earlier is that administration's going to get together and take a look at the capital plan and because this is not immediate, you're going to push it back as a matter of course anyway. Right? So what, what's the implication of this removal? What happens to the plan? Does it literally disappear?
To the mayor, to Council Broadhead, um, if we did remove it from the plan, it would be removed until we brought forward a new charter, um, down the road potentially. So it could stay as a placeholder or, um, it could be removed. And once we go through the community amenities planning and, uh, again, future recreation needs, um, assessment, we could bring back a new charter.
Could or would, or like, I mean, so, I mean, it's been a placeholder for some time now, right?
It has, correct.
Uh, has it served its purpose as a placeholder or like, but if it, if, if it's just sitting there doing nothing, then you might as well get rid of it. But if there's a purpose for it to be there, then I would hesitate to remove it.
Maybe Diane can just explain the purpose of a placeholder. The other Diane.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, so I think one of the things to consider in this process is that, you know, when we have our tenure capital plan, we need to be looking long-term. So if it's a project that we think we really want to do, even if we don't know exactly when we want to do it, I would be hesitant to remove it from the plan if it's, would be something that council would prioritize. It's maybe, you know, a little higher up the list of projects as we, you know, as we show our kind of prioritized list. The problem with removing it, um, potentially, if it's something that council does want to eventually do, um, is that, you know, you take it off the plan now, but then it gets put back in sort of in the first two years of a plan. All of a sudden we decide we want to do it, it gets put in in a year or two. It's very hard to plan for, right? So part of the, part of the goal of the tenure plan is that we have a bit, we have quite a bit of a future outlook of what's coming. So I think what we were, you know, looking at is that, you know, when we had talked about some of our funding, you know, right now, we really only have enough to do about 25 to 35, 30% of what's on our capital plan. So it was really looking at those ones that were really prioritized, like way down at the bottom of the list that we're probably never ever going to get to. Is there any point in even having them on the plan? But for those ones that, you know, it might be a timing issue or, uh, you know, but they're still valid projects that council supports. I, I would probably actually recommend leaving them on the plan, um, if they're kind of in that upper half of kind of prioritized pro- projects.
Thank you.
Because of course you can take away the project, but the need's still there, right? That's the problem. And, and we've opened up, um, other change rooms in the building, have we not? So you can go down to like the ones that are off the courts and et cetera for users of the gym.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has that helped with the public feedback on the inadequate ones in the actual fitness facility?
Not entirely. So it has addressed a small need and for, it's convenient for those on the gym courts. It's not, um, meeting all the needs of people that use the fitness center and the track.
Okay. Yeah, it's a hard one. Okay, I see no questions again, um, for, thank you, uh, for Council Killick. We're going to get this one done and then we're going to have to go to the time specific. Like, we'll get into debate now, I guess. So if anyone has any comments, I'll let you start. You kind of already did, but I, I think council might want to jump in as well on debate.
I'll, I'll hold my comments to close.
Sure. You have something for debate? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I'm not prepared to support this motion right now. I don't think I would support funding this particular project's charter. But, um, Mr. Morty really can, can convince me that I know we need to invest money in Service Place. So I do see value in having that, you know, even though the details of the plan probably don't really fit our needs, but having that money as a placeholder, I, I, I think does have value that, that we should keep there. So that's why I'm not supporting it right today.
Council McKay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I'm, too, am not going to support the motion, although I appreciate the, uh, intention. Um, but I, and I agree with, uh, some of the rationale by Council Jolly and the explanation by Ms. McMorty. I think that helped out a great deal. I, there's a clear demand, uh, articulated through community satisfaction surveys of our citizens that use Service Place, that, that, uh, expansion of the, uh, change rooms in particular is, um, necessary. And considering the high volume of use that was pre-COVID and the uptake that we're now beginning to see once again, uh, only would make this, um, all that more important. And I, I realize that we're not going to be potentially using the dollars this year. We're looking at future and the benefits of just leaving it on as a placeholder right now, I think outweigh us taking it off and coming back with a new charter, although I, I, I can see both benefits of that. But I think right now, because we're not funding it for the 2023, we're actually going to move it down, uh, in relation to, um, uh, kind of some other work that's ongoing with the new community amenity site. Um, I, I, I don't see that there's any, uh, urgent need to replace it right now at this particular time and just keep it on as a placeholder because it is important to our, it's clearly important to our residents. It's clearly important, like just by the volume of people that have used that facility, that it, uh, has an important place in our community. So I, I believe it, it's, we, it, it hurts us, it doesn't cause us any harm just to leave it there.
Okay, thank you. Council Bremansky.
Um, I will not support this one as well. I agree with the two previous councils that just spoke. But, uh, in going to Service Place, uh, a few weeks back, uh, one of the events there, and I saw like the people, you know, exercising in the corridor kind of place. And I mean, I appreciate all the people that are loyal to the facility, but I do see that needs to be upgraded. They need more privacy and more space. So I, I, I think to support the people that have been using it for so long, we need to keep it on the agenda down the road.
Thank you, Council Bremansky. I see no more hands up. Council Killick, I'll, I don't. I don't know. I'll let you try to convince me, but I think, I think I'm leaning towards keeping it. Um, mostly because I don't know when we're going to, we can do the work on the community amenities in the Northwest, but I don't know when we're actually going to build this facility. And until we do, we're going to have more and more pressures on Service Place Fitness and more and more people using it and more and more unhappy customers. And we want to keep them instead of driving them away. So they could rather, um, you know, see a motion, although it doesn't sound like we even need a motion to defer the, to the next year. Um, but, uh, I think I'm going to keep it. Unless you could change me, my mind.
To, uh, maybe closing comments and would be, my intent was that it, when I looked at the original, uh, previous project charter, um, it seemed so out of date. And as we've all sat around the table here today, uh, it, it was a placeholder, um, that, that was out of date in terms of looking at the new scope going forward with the community amenities center. And rather than holding it as a placeholder, my intent was to say, okay, let's, uh, take it off the plan, give administration, um, the opportunity to take a new fresh look at it, bring a new plan with a much clearer project charter based on community needs assessment and how it fit into the overall, uh, community, uh, plan and the new, new facility plan. And bring back a new project charter, uh, with, with that new updated information. Rather than having something that's been a, a placeholder for so many years, uh, that is really quite, I'll say out of date. It, it probably out of date just because it hasn't been looked at. But this was an opportunity to remove it, start fresh, come back with a new project charter with new numbers. Because these, my sense is that these numbers will be out of date or significantly out of whack in any case. So it was to give administration a new clean slate to start with and bring back a new project, which are able to do for, uh, council's consideration at any time. And, uh, based on that, it was just the opportunity to take it off.
Okay, let's call for the vote. Council Bremansky, I think we need your vote. Oh, got it. Okay. Okay, voting's closed. And that motion fails by majority. I won't go any further than that. Uh, I, Diane, I think years ago, you had council over at Service Place and kind of walked through the plan and maybe that's an opportunity for Council Killick or all of us, uh, once again, to kind of have a look at what's being proposed. I, I would say that the numbers aren't out of whack because they spend time trying to update the numbers. But the opportunity to bring something new for it is always there, like you could, you can adjust, right? All right, let's, um, have a motion to go in camera for item number nine, or sorry, 10 point, no, 13.1, sorry. Uh, and then are we, we'll go into the lounge? Okay. All right. So can I have a motion to go in camera? Thank you, Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That council moving camera to discuss the matter pursuant to clause 24 one A and 24 one D of the Freedom of Information Protection and Privacy Act.
All right. Thank you for that. Uh, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes, uh, unanimously. I feel bad. Rachel, the first day you come back, we have this odd in the middle of the meeting in camera. I don't know how long we're going to be, half hour, 45 minutes. So, sorry about that. Okay.
Three days. I don't want it.
Shelley and Chita were just letting Natalie's just taking a quick break, biobreak, I think. Oh, there she is. We didn't want to reconvene without her, but she's coming now. So, Councilor Braddock, can you make a motion to reconvene in public? Thank you. All those in favor? Natalie put her hand up so you can give it a yes. Boarding is closed. That carried unanimously. All right. And no recommendations coming out of that in camera session. So we will go on back, or I guess, to Councilor Kilic.
Mayor Karen?
Yes.
Just I'm wondering if we could put all the DARP motions together?
Well, I was thinking about that. So, Councilor Kilic, your DARP motions, some of the arguments might be specific to the actual project. Some of the arguments might be to the entire DARP plan. So I was thinking about doing the first one. And then if most of the arguments are about let's leave the planner, let's get rid of the plan in general, then we could probably do all the rest the same. So why don't we go to your first one, which is the Civic Center, right? Or do you want to even open with some thoughts of, is that every DARP project that was on the list that you've taken out? DARP, okay. So do you want to do them all together? Okay. Okay, so Councilor Hughes, Councilor Madske, everyone will do them all together unless somebody does want one split. But why don't we wait till we hear from you before we decide if we want to split or not. Okay. So go ahead and then we'll open it up to questions.
Okay. Thank you for opening comments then for the Civic Plaza, Perron Street, Grandin Road, St. Anne, St. Thomas, Tache Street, all were focused under DARP. They look to be very long-term, quite grandiose plans, nothing wrong with that. But are they the priority for setting our budget? And they are significant dollars, each one of the projects. Civic Plaza, number one, large building downtown in the parking lot. Believe that the dollars there would be much better spent on focusing on Millennium Park. And do we really need a Civic Plaza? Is it the best use of dollars? Do we need the space? Do we need the way it was looked at in terms of even getting rid of parking in that area? More office space that, you know, was earmarked for city, those kinds of things. Said to me that the Civic Plaza, as it was originally envisioned in DARP several years ago, is out of date in terms of looking at Millennium Park. The proposal for Perron Street was to narrow the street down to just four lanes, getting rid of the parking on either side, make much broader space for pedestrians, and have the two outside lanes used for occasional parking in off-hours. Again, narrowing Perron Street down from what it is today to the what was envisioned in the charter, just didn't seem to be fit the current, current model. Grandin Road, removing the median in the middle and widening the pedestrian zones. Again, does that really make sense in terms of the best use of all of these dollars? St. Anne Street being proposed to narrow that down to three lanes to make much broader promenades on either side of the street or pedestrian and bicycle traffic. Same comment. Does that really fit with what we envision? Or would we be better to better served to have all of this activity and energy put into Millennium Place? And similar one for Tache Street was also to make this a green corridor leading, it actually says connecting Brenadier Park, but it doesn't actually connect to that park. There's current development and buildings in the way. So making it a green corridor to connect over to Millennium Park. To me, when I looked at all of those six projects, all under DARP, it, I wondered if they were current to what we had envisioned as being the best use of tax dollars versus, it would make a very nice downtown, but would it be what we would call as a priority for council versus putting all of our energy and efforts and dollars into making a much, actually making Millennium Park and bringing that site to life. So that's why I had proposed taking these off of the 10-year capital plan. And they are all spread out throughout multiple years in the plan. They're not all at once, not suggesting that. But they are in total a significant amount of dollars. So that's, that's why I lumped them all under DARP, but each one with an individual standalone item.
Right. Right. So four years ago, when we, when we did the look at the 10-year plan, it was suggested at the time to take out the DARP, all of them, projects. And at the time, council was hesitant and advised very much by staff to be minimalist placeholders, because we really didn't have, we, meaning the entire city, staff and council, didn't have a good grasp of what we really wanted to do in the downtown. And we did nothing on it over the last term. And that's why I think there's more of a focus this term, is to kind of pick and choose. There were some unintended consequences. I do that just for you, Councilor Mackay, because of some required underground servicing stuff. So I did ask Mr. Hiltz if we could have both Donnie from engineering and Adrian from planning in here to speak to those servicing issues. But I'm gonna open, you had your thing for a question? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I think I was maybe tagging along with some of your opening comments and asking, because I was going to ask administration, basically where they are on some of these projects. And also, the previous council had met when we were initially looking at what should stay on and how it should and why. And, and, and so I'm kind of interested in knowing, one of those that we did keep on was a prioritization exercise where we set aside about $100,000 to look at it. And I don't know what progress has occurred on that as well. So I think we're asking similar.
I think, I think probably we have frustrated our staff with not pushing this, progressing it forward to see what we actually need to do. So Councilor Mackay is right, there was a prioritization in the budget. So I don't know, Adrian or Donnie, if you can, or Christina can speak to where we're sitting with that?
I, oh, I guess I'll give it a shot first, and then maybe Adrian. Our team has been approved for budget this year to review DARP and DARP prioritization projects. So this isn't just reviewing, this isn't a review of the DARP plan necessarily, but it is about some of these projects that are mentioned within DARP and some of the ones that Counselor Kilic has identified. So that is part of the process. We are in the, we are beginning the project plan at this stage. And we're hoping to work on that over the next about 12 months to come back with recommendations on which projects to keep, which ones to proceed with, which are the higher priority, what are the ones that can be put on hold, and if they're still relevant.
Right. Okay. So I'm seeing a bunch of questions, but I guess I've more comments and questions for you. So I'll go to questions first, Councilor Hughes, and then Councilor Madske.
No, I thought we're gonna go into debate. So I can, I don't have questions right now. I can hold up.
Okay. Any questions for you, Councilor Madske?
I'll wait as well. Thanks.
Debate, okay. Debate. Councilor Mackay, you were up and then you were down.
That's my life as an old man. I guess, so thank you very much for the clarification. So right now, that's just starting. And basically, from what I took from administration's response, Christina, is that you are kind of looking at addressing some of Councilor Kilic's concerns in relation to DARP. Is that, did I capture, capture that then?
That is my understanding of the project. I'll just confirm with Adrian as well.
That's, that's correct. As Christina noted, all these projects, there's a number of them listed in the DARP. And the intent was to actually go through the projects that were identified and to try to verify which ones made sense to explore further and which ones maybe seem to be of low return value. And also, as part of this, I think it was mentioned, we need to create an understanding from a servicing perspective of what is actually needed to support the full build out of the downtown. And then there's a kind of a component of, I guess, mutual benefit at that time. So until we kind of understand what servicing needs to be upgraded or replaced or whatever, that kind of limits our ability to really project where we could have significant improvements or additional increment to the project, or if they would be significant standalone improvements.
So just follow-up question, and Madam Mayor, is that, I mean, currently, we're not planning on moving any budget. These are just placeholders sitting on our growth plan. There's no budget going to be allocated in 2023 based until this work is done, correct? Sorry, for those people listening on radio, I need a
Okay. It looks like there's some more questions. If everyone's okay with debating them all at once, go, do you have anything further? Do you want to close? Honestly, Councilor Kilic, I'm wondering if you want to even put them forward, or do you want to wait till this prioritization is done?
Yeah, that could be an option. We, we look at this in light of a holistic view of what DARP is going to be done. And if that's a funded project that they're already going to undertake, that may come back with support for some of the things I've already put forward here, or it may
Exactly.
identify a
So do you want to wait till that's done before you bring this forward?
Yeah, I brought them forward because of the ask originally
Yep, no, absolutely.
for budget cuts. But it seems now, maybe in light of that broader DARP review plan, these can wait.
Okay. All right. So did you get that? We're gonna wait.
Yeah.
Well, we'll just withdraw them for now and
Yeah.
and then, okay.
We'll withdraw from the motion, yeah.
And okay, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll do that. We haven't, we don't have them read into the records, so we just won't put And I didn't accept them. Yeah, no. Okay, thanks. All right. Okay, so there is no debate on this. Okay. All right. That leaves, where am I? Nine, 10, 11. Do you want to do all three together, Councilor Jolly? Okay. So I don't know if you want. So we're on to nine, 10, and 11, which were the recommendations essentially coming out of CGI. So we'll do them all together. And Councilor Jolly, do you have any arguments or comments around those?
My comments are really thank you to administration for keeping us on top of this plan, making sure that it's continuing to meet our needs, and really providing the support to change it as that is required. It was a great presentation, great discussion at CJSC, and I really appreciate everyone's, everyone's comments through that process.
I'm seeing no more comments. Call for the vote. Boarding's closed, sorry. And that passes unanimously. Okay, we are on to 8.1, which is approved on consent, which was budget adjustments. So the motion was that the 2022 final consolidated municipal utility budget in the amount of $302,263,400 and the net tax requirement of $117,532,400 is shown in the attachment titled 2022 Adjusted Consolidated Budget Be Approved. So that was passed on consent. And that essentially means 2.8% tax. Right. So appreciate, you know, my own comments on that diner, appreciate that you took, you know, there was some excess that we could have adjusted to the tax rate, but you kept it in reserves for future. So I thought that was a good decision. Service and service level inventories was on consent. So adjusting for the grass cutting mistake, which was actually a good, a good catch, Councilor Kilic, because as Mr. Hiltz said, it would really have caused some confusion this summer. So the motion that was on consent was the updated service and service levels inventory provided as an attachment to the May 2, 2022 agenda report. Hello? I don't know what that was. Entitled Service and Service Levels Inventory Annual Update Be Approved, that the approved updated version of the service and service levels inventory replace the version currently attached to the council policy, CFS 05 Budget and Taxation Guiding Principles, Schedule 1, Services and Service Level Inventory, and that the CAO be directed to bring to council any recommended adjustments to services and service levels prior to the development of the 2023 proposed budget. So Rachel, for, just so you understand what I was So Rachel, for, just so you understand what I was talking about with the grass cutting, we didn't pull off consent because Counselor Kilik made a motion at budget to move from 10 days to 12 days for cutting. And so that wasn't reflected in the gender report, but it is reflected in the final product, just in case anyone asks. Don't do mosquitoes, Brian. All right. Now we get into the fun conversation of what we're going to look at for tax increases for the next couple of years. So 8.3, we've got, oh, we've got Suzanne Finley is going to present this, or is it, or, or is Daria? Who's doing this one, Carrie?
I believe both.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so.
Double trouble.
Okay, and just, so it's 4:12. Just so everyone knows, Council Broadhead has a very important meeting with Minister of Municipal Affairs at 4:30, and he said it will only be a half hour, so we're going to call a break at 4:30. And now we'll eat while he has his meeting, and we'll save you some food, Counselor Broadhead. So we'll, it will, I don't want to, I just want to let everyone know, we're going to stop the conversation no matter where, where we're at at 4:30. So go ahead, ladies.
Thank you. I'm just going to share my screen here. We've got a presentation for you for today. Great. Can everybody see that?
No, it's not being shared.
Oh, everyone, how about that?
Hold on, I just, there we go, yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council. My name is Suzanne Finley, and I am the interim manager of financial services. So along with Daria Sloker, the manager of strategic services, we will be providing an overview of the forecasted 23 to 25 operating position. Administration has taken a proactive approach to prepare a preliminary tax increase forecast and share with council prior to development of the proposed budget. This will provide an opportunity for a collaborative approach with council to ensure that the proposed budget presented in the fall of 2022 is within a tax range that is acceptable by council and to plan actions required to achieve that range with council's input and direction. So during the presentation, we will review the anticipated financial position and forecast, present actions taken to date to maintain low tax increases, review what we have heard from residents, provide some options that could be taken for the 23 budget, and talk about next steps. The city of St. Albert follows an established strategic framework to align the city's strategic and business planning, budgeting, management, and reporting practices and processes to achieve outcomes established in the community vision and pillars of sustainability and City of St. Albert Council Strategic Plan. These components, together with council's bylaws, policies, and resolutions, provide direction to the CAO for decision-making related to strategic and business planning, budgeting, management, and implementation of initiatives to achieve established outcomes and corporate reporting to council and the community. The proposed budget is developed to maintain council-approved services and service levels, as well as council's strategic plan. It also typically includes new budget requests for business cases that are required to maintain delivery of council-approved services. We'll now go into the financial position and forecast. While COVID-19 has impacted the current financial position of the organization, the issue of long-term fiscal sustainability has been developing for many years and requires action now to ensure that we are poised for the future. With the current tax split ratio of 80% residential and 20% non-residential, St. Albert struggles to meet the growing needs and desires of the community without significantly impacting the average residential taxpayer. The main options available to start addressing this issue are increasing the non-residential assessment base and/or pursuing new unconventional, ongoing, and growing non-traditional revenue sources. Investments in new capital assets and the proper maintenance of the existing asset base is an issue facing all municipalities. We have always relied on provincial and federal grants to supplement the relatively small capital contributions from our annual tax levy. With the long-term goal of being able to self-fund the required maintenance of our existing city assets, council took bold steps last year to incorporate a 1.5% tax increase into the budget and guiding principles policy. Increasing uncertainty around provincial grants has made this contribution even more critical in ensuring the long-term funding of our existing assets. Over the last several years, council has moved forward with some significant strategic and operational projects through the use of debt. As these projects progress and ventures are secured, municipal taxes will need to increase to support the required annual debt servicing payments. The projects, these projects currently include the rate given drive twinning, fire hall number four and related equipment, and the police building. Other debts being funded through reserves or anticipated new revenue include North St. Albert Trail corridor project, Range Row 260 servicing, and a future solar farm. While these debts do not impact the tax directly, they do still go against our deadline, reducing capacity in the future. Increases in operational costs associated with some of these new projects will also put pressure on our tax rates. The following graph provides some information related to the tax increase since 2016 and the forecasted tax increase for the next three years. As noted in the chart, the city has experienced low tax increases over the last seven years with an annual average increase of 1.6%. This has been done through minimal request for positions as a result of organizational restructuring and repurposing vacant positions, ongoing review of the operational budget by administration to maintain fiscal responsibility, increases in revenues due to additional franchise fees, and minimal, minimal capital investment with operational impacts or new debt. And in 2022, the budget was supplemented by reserve funds, which resulted from a surplus in 2020 due to a one-time COVID grant that was received. While the city has been able to offset tax increases through the above measures, we have exhausted all short-term actions to reduce the tax impact, and continuing that these short-term actions is also not sustainable. Administration is exploring revenue generating opportunities. However, it could take several years to see an impact on the budget. While the city has not utilized the remaining reserve funds that arose from the COVID grant, this is only a one-time solution, which is, does not address the long-term tax increase. So unless council is comfortable with forecasted tax increases, it will be necessary to look at current enactions that can be taken to manage and reduce the impact on the tax. The next slide is going to talk about our forecast for 2022 to 2025. So it is important to note that the forecasted tax increases do not include any new base budget business cases that may be required to maintain council-approved services and service levels or council priorities. This includes new positions or funds required to manage existing growth that will be identified through the 23 budget process. It also does not factor in any debt servicing or operational impacts associated with any capital investments that, that are not yet approved but might be on the tenure plan. In going through this, the assumptions that were used to maintain service levels were that step increases, union settlements, and cost of living increases were based on nominal increases which have trended over the last few years, a 3% annual inflation on contracted and general services, and an estimate that 900,000 of assessment growth would be applied to the base each year. So for 2023, we are currently forecasting a 7.2% increase. Of this amount, 2.1 is due to one-time funding used in 2022. 2% is to maintain service levels. 1.5% is to the RMR infrastructure funding, and 1% is in debt principal and interest funding for the rate given drive. And 0.6 is the increase in additional operating impacts from fire hall number four, which is the hiring of about seven emergency services personnel. The same assumptions are used for 2024 and 2025. The 2024 forecast increase of 6.2% is due to a 1.9% increase to maintain services, 2% increase in debt principal and interest funding, which withdraws on fire station number four and equipment, a 1.5% increase in RMR infrastructure funding, and a 0.8% increase in additional operating impacts from fire hall four, which was the remaining eight emergency services personnel and operating costs. In 2025, the forecast increase of 3.9% is due to a 2.1% increase to maintain services, a 1.5% increase in RMR infrastructure funding, and a 0.3% increase in debt and, in debt principal and interest funding, which is related to the draw on the police building. It is important to also note that while 2025 appears to reduce significantly, this is due to the fact that the 23 to 25 initiatives that are determined have not yet been incorporated into the budget. The decisions that will be made in 23 and 24 will impact the 25 forecast increase. As assessment growth offset tax increases and allows new initiatives to be funded without impacting taxes, I wanted to provide a brief explanation about it. So assessment growth relates to property tax revenue that is derived from new construction and development activity. According to policy CFS05, assessment growth is applied as follows. 20% is a contribution for the, to go against the lifestyle of reserves, 25% to offset the base budget property tax requisition, 55% of new initiatives. And any portion of the 55% that is not used is transferred to the growth stabilization reserve. The financial forecast has budgeted an annual assessment growth of 2 million and applied 900,000, which is effectively the 45% against the base. The remaining 1.1 million for new growth initiatives has not been factored into the estimate as we have reserved it to be used for growth. One of the options is that it could also be used against the operating impacts from fire, from the fire hall. And council could also apply the full amount of the base to offset the tax impact. But what this would do is eliminate funding for required initiatives, and then those would have to be either put against the base or deferred. So what actions have been taken to do? During the 2022 budget, council approved over 1 million in permanent service level adjustments. This included 8.58 FTE positions totaling 593,000, converting Saturday transit service to on-demand for a savings of 223,000, and a reduction in service hours at Fountain Park Service Place and St. Albert Place. Also, the full amount of assessment growth was applied to the base rather than just the 45%, which amounted to an additional 1.2 million, or about 1%. One-time impacts that were utilized by administration included eliminating the 2022 public art transfer and utilization again of the reserve fund. On top of these reductions, departments have been reducing their budgets over the last few years to minimize tax increases, which has resulted in mean budgets within all areas. So I'm now going to pass this over to Daria, and she's going to talk a little bit about what we've heard from residents.
Thank you, Suzanne. So as council knows, we conducted the community satisfaction survey in 2021. When asked about priorities for the new council, respondents listed budget and tax strategy as their number one priority. For municipal budget and taxation strategy, respondents focused on maintaining or reducing property tax, diversifying the tax base, and balancing the municipal budget by optimizing services to reduce spending. What, when we asked about the municipal tax strategy, 51% of respondents stated that they would prefer to keep their tax bill at the same level, even if it results in some services being reduced. Of respondents that opted for a tax increase for the next five years, 27% stated that they would be willing to accept a 5% tax increase. Next slide, please. Suzanne, next slide?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. So as Suzanne provided throughout her presentation, when looking at determining strategy for 2325 budget, there are several options available for council consideration. Council could recommend using a full amount of assessment growth to offset the tax increase. While this will reduce the tax impact, it also limits administration's ability to fund required initiatives due to growth or council priorities. Council could review the 1.5% transfer to RMR infrastructure deficit and recommend a lower amount to be transferred. However, this is also not a long-term solution. And while it would lower the tax rate, it also puts risk on future funding of the city's infrastructure assets. Looking at major capital projects with operating impact, such as, you know, fire hall, the fire hall four has been approved to proceed, but it does come with debt servicing and operating impacts that will affect future tax increases. A review could be done to assess if this project could be delayed, or any other similar projects. Council could direct administration to utilize the remaining reserve funding from COVID grant that was received in 2020. While this will reduce tax increase in the year it is applied, it will have an impact on the future year's tax increase. So finally, council could review approved services and service levels to determine if and where changes could be made to reduce impact on budget. As the budget is based on maintaining existing services, which is approximately about 85% of our budget, including those services that support and enable delivery of services to community, making adjustments to services and service level would have an impact on the budget. And this would really, to achieve, sorry, I should say, to achieve more of a long-term impact and tax increase, review of services and service levels may really be inevitable. It is also important to note that some of these adjustments, should we decide to go that way, are not immediate. They do require time to make a proper analysis for impact and also for implementation. So budget impacts would not be realized immediately. Next slide, please.
And you know what, Daria? As I said, 4:30 was Council Broadhead's cut-off.
Okay.
Run out. So can we take a break? And then, because he really wants to be part of this conversation as well.
Sure.
We'll reconvene, I'm actually going to say 5:15, because we'll give Wes then 15 minutes to grab a bite as well. So 5:15, so about a 45-minute dinner break, okay?
Sounds good. Thank you. Sounds good. Thank you.
Just a second, see if Sheena and Shelley are back. All right, Councilor Hughes, Councilor Bermansky, you back? I, that was fast. And Sheena. Okay, awesome. Okay, let's get started. Because we still have a lot ahead of us. Where are we? Oh, we're in the middle of a presentation from JAR, yeah. Sorry to cut you off like that, ladies. Just pick up where you left off, I guess, and we'll keep going.
No worries. Just give us a second. Suzanne, are you going to share the screen? Okay.
There we go.
Okay, so we just reviewed the options that are available for council for consideration, and we ended this by suggesting that we review council-approved services and service levels. If we're looking, especially if we're looking at the long-term financial sustainability, so it's not year by year. So next slide. So as council will remember, in 2020, we did the workshop with council using information from priority-based planning and budgeting to inform adjustments to service and service levels, and information was shared with council for consideration to include into proposed budget to reduce tax increase. In 2021, administration used that same information to identify services and service level adjustments. But in 21, we incorporated those adjustments into proposed budgets so that we can reduce the tax increase before it was presented to council. So for 2022, we were hoping that we can work collaboratively with council to obtain council's input into services and service levels that can be reviewed for potential adjustments before including any of those adjustments into proposed budget. So today, we're hoping to get input and direction from council related to tax increase range for the proposed budget and any actions required to manage the impact on proposed tax increase from delivery of programs and services to community. And should council decide to take a look at services and service levels to direct administration to organize a committee of the whole with council by the end of May 2022 to review services and service levels and consider potential adjustments to manage the tax increase. So with that, we will finish our presentation and open up for any questions, comments, and input from council.
Awesome. I should have just let you finish that. Didn't know it was almost done. Okay, questions? Councilor Mackay is up first.
Yeah, thank you very much for your presentation. I get, just going back to the direction that administration is seeking for today, just to be clear, so we will, like, I think number three was just to send back our thoughts or our how comfortable, I just need to know exactly what we're going to have, because if we're going to have a committee of the whole potentially by the end of May, the timing is a little off in that ask.
So just to clarify, we were hoping that today council could provide us a bit of a guidance related to what would be that acceptable tax increase range, so that we have that information to work with internally and also just to direct us to organize a committee of the whole to look at services and service levels collaboratively so that we can identify any potential areas that, you know, we may look at adjusting or even areas that you don't want us to to touch at all. So this is more, number three is more to plan for that workshop so that we can take a closer look. But number two is to give us a better sense today if council can provide that today as to what is that tax range that we can look at before we initiate a development of a proposed budget internally, which is quite time-consuming process. And we want to make sure that we can give everybody internally as clear instructions as possible. And having a tax range will help us with that.
Yeah, fair enough. I understand. I understand the request now, but I also would suggest to you that I can't do one without knowing three. So for me, I mean, I'm not, I mean, if you looked at your graph that Suzanne had presented earlier, I mean, there was kind of a, you know, a range that we stayed with between, you know, I think at one particular time, we were down around one or 0.9, and then we went all the way up to like 2.8. And I know in previous councils, you know, we've been higher, but again, without actually having a, I mean, we had one kind of a workshop, more of a familiarization, I think, from new council members around the service levels and inventory, and then we just approved that earlier on consent. So I mean, for us to go through that and look at, because as your background reported, eighty-six percent of our of our tax bases in the way we provide services, because that's what I read, correct? So for us to then say, well, I'm comfortable with that number, let's, you know, pick a number, like an even number, zero or two. What does that take to accomplish that? So I don't have that information directly in front of me, and I don't think it's fair to administration if I set a a kind of a goal line without actually saying what that ramifications are, because I mean, I could say two tonight, you could come back and say, well, that means we're not going to do the following for 400 things or something like that. So you kind of follow where I'm being a little challenged on the ask.
Go ahead. Yeah, thank you worship and to Councilor Mackay. This is a very difficult question, but I think from administration's perspective is that we would like a little bit of guidance. A couple of years ago, we would come in with the with the tax increase. I'm not sure of how comfortable council would be if everything stays consistent, and we came in with a seven percent. Last year, we came in with 2.5% and council was forced to add things back into the budget. So what we'd be probably proposing to do is bring back some different buckets with consequences. So if council said that, you know what, we could live with four percent, or we could live with five percent, or we could live with one percent, whatever. At least that would give us some guidance to come back with some different with some different options. It could be taking assessment, it could be taking RMR, it could be taking these reserves and grants and stuff, it could be taking service levels. But we have to be able to provide different options and scenarios to be able to get that. If we don't get this information, what happens is we bring back the budget, and then we scramble, because you're not happy with the number we come back with. We scramble in a very quick, short period of time to try to make all of that work. So we're just trying to massage this over the course of a couple of months. And so we give us our direction so we can work towards something. And even if you're not held to that number, like if you say it's four percent or whatever, you're not held to that, it's just something that gives us some framework to work from.
So I, and I appreciate the extra context, and I understand now where you're coming from a little bit better, but I'm familiar with in the past with different budgeting from different organizations where, you know, we presented a zero percent or, and what does a five percent look like, or what does a minus two percent look like? Now I realize that that's potentially a lot of work for administration to do, and I'm looking at Diane. Yeah, McMorty, but Diane Inger too. But I, so I mean, just saying, I mean, is 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 there an acceptable range that we could say would be fair to administration so that I could say prepare a two to four percent? And what are the impacts ramifications and possibilities? I mean, is that is that a reasonable percent?
I think that we're 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 open to accepting ranges. Like, just don't make it zero to seven. But you know, I think that, you know, three to five or or one to three or one to four, whatever. At least it gives us a bit of context to know, like, like last year when we went in there and we said it was going to be, when we kind of arbitrarily kind of went with that 2.5, we went in there kind of knowing that that could change, but it was a lot of work to get there. At least this way, we know that you wouldn't be kind of that just number that you're just not going to be happy with. We can kind of work towards that, and our staff will know. It gives us a bit of basis.
Yeah, I know. I know. I mean, just for me, it's the challenge will be, we're all going to potentially have ideas or disagreements in relation to what services are we willing to lose or what services are residents willing to lose? What services are some residents considering core versus what other residents don't view as core? And so, I mean, I mean, and so, yes, that's false to us, but I would be more comfortable in a range if that helps.
No, I really do think the range would really help. And then when we bring back these buckets, then you guys can apply your political lenses to them.
As long as there's not holes in the pockets.
Might be.
Okay. Let me try and keep track. I think Councilor Hughes was up first, then Councilor Broadhead, then Councilor Killick, then Councilor Bermansky. So I think that's the order. Councilor Hughes, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we came in the number at 7.2 was the gross tax increase, right? And then when I look at, that didn't include your assessment decreases, correct? Who am I going to look at? Suzanne, hi.
No, it does, the, it's the assessment decrease is part of the two percent to maintain service levels.
Right, so I know, but we look at, you had initial tax increase at 7.2, and then we have an offset at the base of point five, and then we have an offset of the RMR increase of point four, right? So are we taking that off of the 7.2 and we're down to 6.3? Or is the 7.2 including those assumptions?
Sorry, I'm just trying to find. So, sorry, Councilor Hughes, could you just repeat what you're taking off here? I just.
Yeah, so we had the total increase on the one of the slides, the tax breakdown of 7.2.
That's right.
Then we have the assessment amount of a 0.5 as a to offset the base and a 0.4 to offset the RMR. Is that included in the 7.2, or are we actually down to a 6.3?
No, that, sorry, yes, that, you're correct. That is included in the 7.2.
In total, so even with that, we're at 7.2.
That's correct.
Okay, the other question I had was the reserve funds. I don't know if it's who you talked to or who, but when this came through last budget, it was a 2.5 coming out of the reserve to decrease the taxes. And we had, not you and I, but you and your, me and your department had a discussion about, okay, well, we know this is a one-time tax relief, and we don't normally do it to offset operating for this very reason. And so the conversation was that there was an expectation that we would get some sort of grant release to help offset it for future years, so we wouldn't be looking at the same tax increase. But now I'm looking at this, and we're saying 2.1%. We did not get any any relief from, like, because we said we were assuming 2.5, and now we're saying only 400,000 we found relief from. I'm just, I, I'm feeling a little frustrated right now, because just like six months ago, we were, we approved a 2.5 agreeing to the reserve funds with an expectation that a bulk of it would be taken off of future budgets coming through with federal grants or other assistance for transit, et cetera, which we did get. So can you explain why we're still at 2.1% reserve funding out of the 2.5 coming off the taxes or increasing the taxes?
Yeah, so what we're saying is that in 2023, the 7.2 is a breakdown of that one-time funding that we use. So currently, in this 23 budget, we haven't tagged any one-time or grant funding. So we're saying because we got the two and a half million, and until we go through the whole budget process, we're right now, we don't know what is going to come back, but we haven't applied any one-time or additional grant funding. But the 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 two and a half million dollars that we use to supplement our budget in 223, when you you take that off, you don't have that in, or in 222, when you take it off, you don't have it in 223. So you have to find that funding difference, and right now, we haven't gone through the whole budget to determine what more is going to come back for one time. There is reserve funding that, again, you could, we could apply to help reduce that. But it's just understanding that long-term, if we don't have something to supplement that revenue, you know, we're going to have to true it up at some point, if that makes sense.
Okay, so what we're saying is that the grant funding, the offset we've got for transit for other things has not been applied to this 2.1% yet, so the 2.1% could be significantly lower.
Yeah, so we're saying right now, because we haven't put any kind of one-time or reserve or that grant funding into the 23 budget, it's 2.1% higher because we did it in 22, and we have not applied anything yet in 23.
Okay, I'm not talking about the, I'm not talking about the stabilization reserve. I'm talking about outside funding, because there, I don't know if Diane's here right now, so we had this conversation, and we said we're going to do this, it's a one-time, but we're expecting other forms of government to offset that COVID deficit so that way we would not be facing such a huge number this year. So I'm just trying to reconcile these two.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we ever said there was other levels of government. I mean, did the.
Yep, transit, other things like that.
Councilor Hughes, the transit funding was not expected when we did the budget. But we did get a lump sum that we put into stabilization in ear, so I think what comes to Hughes is we were earmarking it for two to three years. I think we've used it twice. So there could potentially be an offset out of stabilization.
Absolutely. So that's what Suzanne is saying. So we do have, like, money left over still from the COVID, big COVID grant that we got from the province. But what we're just trying to say is that it's still one-time money. So whether we use it, some of it this year, which I'm absolutely assuming we will be to to offset some of the tax increases. But at some point, we're going to run out of that money, and it has to be backfilled somehow. So whether it's with new sources of revenue, now hopefully, some of our operating revenues are still not pre-COVID levels. Hopefully, those will continue to grow, but they're probably not going to grow enough to offset that full two and a half million. So at some point, we have to find ways to backfill it, right? So the intent is that we had this funding that we could use over, you know, a couple of years as we figured this out, but we do have to figure it out.
And so we have used, because it's a good point that Councilor Hughes brought up, that was, so we're not using any right now in the 7.2, but it's available.
That's correct. But we just kind of wanted to show what the impact of what happens when that money runs runs out, and there isn't any money. That's the kind of increases that we're facing.
So I'm sorry to interrupt you, Councilor Hughes, I'll go right back to you. So we got six million-ish in operating? And we we sort of thought that two million a year for three years, and we have, we used, have we used four million of that six million? We also, two, two years?
Yeah, there's just under four million remaining in the in the reserve.
How much?
Just under four million. So after we use the 220.
But of that grant, how much is remaining?
Yeah, about 3.9 million. Because there was seven million, we used two million in 22, and we had typed two and a half million, but with that budget report, we put some back into the reserve that we can bring forward. So I think it works to about 3.9 million.
Well, that's good to know. Okay, sorry, Councilor Hughes.
It's good. We're just trying to sort this out, so I get it. So, okay. I'm looking at you, Diane, just because I have a, we've had a conversation, like, well, we had a conversation last year. So what I'm trying to figure out is, because you said, okay, that we are expecting the revenues to, the operating revenue deficits to increase, they're not there yet. How much are we expecting the operating revenues to never get there? Like, you know, we're down 2.1%. How much? Are we expecting some of them to never come back to pre-COVID levels? Or is it just that they're still down 2.1% to achieve the pre-COVID levels? Or is it just that they're still down 2.1% to achieve the pre-COVID levels?
Um, I'll start and then I'll maybe ask Suzanne or Anne to, to jump in. I mean, I think our revenues have actually come back quite strong. I mean, a lot of our revenues are on the, on the recreation side. And, and those revenues have actually come back quite strong. They're probably not quite at 100%, but they're, they're up there. Our biggest loss right at this point still is transit, right? Like that's our, our biggest area where we haven't. And you know, it's, it's, it's impossible for me to say whether we will ever get to pre, to pre-COVID levels, at least in the next couple of years. It might take longer than that, right? Um, but you know, their strategies obviously, you know, happening in the region around that. So that's a tough question to answer, whether those will ever come back. I mean, I think one of the other things that, you know, our council is aware that's sort of hit us, hit us this year is just the, the big increase in our RCMP contract, right? So that was something that was not, that was a big jump in one year, that in essence, we kind of used that 2.5 million. I mean, we're calling it COVID funding, but at the end of the day, we used it to just sort of offset the tax rate, to get the tax rate down to a reasonable level. Um, but you know, funding some of those other increases or things, we, we have to find a way to, to fund those going into the future. And I don't know if Anne has anything else to add for that on revenues?
No, and just the other thing is, is as we go through the 223, of course, when the budget was done for 222, 23 to 25 is sort of a fallout from the 222. When we go to do the 223, I think at this time they'll have a lot more information as far as how our trending looks for the, you know, for the future and, and how the revenues are going to go, but certainly Diane is correct. As such, transit was not forecasting to be back to full pre-COVID levels in the next few years. So we'll be assessing that this year.
So the bulk of the 2.1% is from transit deficit? Or is it just transit, or is it transit deficit, the police salary increase? Like, I'm just trying to figure out, because I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time, like, let me just, Diane, let me try and figure out. Because I respect what you have to say, is that we said it was because there's a deficit in the operating, but we're only estimating a 0.4% increase in the operating net from what we funded last time. So I'm trying to figure out why we haven't, you're saying we had the revenues come back up, but I'm not seeing that in the reserve funding removal line. So I'm trying to figure out if the revenues have come back up, is it just, how can it be if it's just these two items? Is it because they're such a big ticket item? Or like I'm just, should, and that's, and the problem is even if we use more capital funding, we're just going to do what we did last year, which is kick the can down the road. So, um, to where it's preferably a bit better. So can you help me understand why if we took it because we thought the operating would be less? And then we now see the operating to be higher and it's close to at par, why we're still at 2.1 when we were at 2.5 last year?
So I, so I think part of the challenge is that we're back to pre-COVID service level, right? So we're, we're providing services at a pre-COVID level, service level, but our revenues are not back 100%. So that's part of the issue. Um, you know, we're obviously experiencing inflation. We're, you know, you know, we're having to add back in that like last couple of years, you know, there hasn't been much in the terms of salary increases. So some of those things we've been, you know, we're kind of on pause for the last couple of years that now sort of have to pick back up. So it's, it's inflated, it's a bunch of things kind of hitting us all at once. That's, that's causing, causing some of that to happen. Um, like I said, we've recovered, we've recovered a good chunk of our revenues that we originally lost through COVID, but our expenses have gone up faster because we've gone back to pre, pre-COVID service levels. So our expenses are back up to full, um, but the revenues aren't quite, quite there yet. And some of them may not, may not come back, may take a few more years to come back as well.
So really the maintenance of service level category should be higher then? Like we're saying 2%, but we're not recognizing the impact of inflation. So that, if the green part of the chart should be bigger than the blue part right now.
Yeah, so it's really the purple and the green, um, thing that really represents the service, the, the maintenance of service levels, right? It's just that we were able to offset it last year with that purple component. And in this forecast, we're just trying to show that, that, that's where, why part of the increase is so high is because we funded it with one-time money last year. And like I said, there's still, we still have the ability to do that coming up with some, but we just, we got to start thinking how long-term we're going to be able to, to fund this. Hopefully we will go up and help offset that as well.
Yeah, but we are assessing, um, we're, we are being pretty pessimistic with the assessments, like 2% is pretty low. We'd often get higher, 2.7 or 2.8. Um, so that, that's a bit, I realize you're, you're coming in conservative because you might as well, and that way we have better news at the end of the year than the beginning. Um, the other thing is as far as the tax increases, if you go forward to 2025, I'm going to go forward in this, the chart, you're going to see here, like, well, as soon as we approved that RMR, one and a half percent annually, I had said like last term, we're looking at a minimum of a three and a half percent tax increase because the base is 2% for maintenance, assuming we don't have inflation, and we still have the infrastructure at one and a half. So now our base is three and a half. Um, this new debenture is just, that's just additional debt for that little, little amount of extra debt there. So that is what really is eating a lot into this, is that we really can't come forward and say to you, we want a 2% when we've agreed to a three and a half base. I mean, that's what it comes down to, unless we want to continue to slash service levels further and further and further. And so I, I, I said before, I thought one and a half percent was too aggressive. And certainly for the next two to three years, until we come out of the COVID impact on the financial impact, we really should be thinking about how much of a tax increase we want to hit on people because this RMR is having a significant impact for how much we're putting in here. And we're not recognizing the fact that just because the full, we're coming out of the COVID, the financial impacts are lagging, just like the inflation rate was lagging from what happened when you printed trillions of dollars. Now we're facing the inflation rates. Now we're facing the supply chain issues that are now having a backlog. So we're coming out of COVID, but the reality is the financial impacts are lagging for several years. And that's what we're continuing to see across all the markets and we're going to continue to see it here. And so that's the question we need to ask ourselves is how far do we want to push the RMR? Recognizing that two to three years from now, we may come out of something, something different and we'd have a different story for the tax increases.
Okay, Council Hughes, we're, we're not here to break it down into individual bites. What Carrie and her staff need is an overall range. So I'm going to actually allow a few other members of council to jump in here because they've been waiting. Council Broadhead, you were up next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, uh, so basically what you're asking for is, is a scenario plan, right? So I would pick three, you know, two, four, six, and then just bring it down. This is what buys you 6%. This is what buys you 4%. This is what buys you 2%. And then council can make decisions based on that because you're going to have to do that anyway, because we don't know what it's going to take to get us to 2%. But if you, if you define that, then, then we'll be able to make a decision. So I, I guess basically I'm agreeing with a bucket, so three buckets, I guess, if you will. But that would be my, I, I mean, we do this all the time, is develop scenarios so that we can actually make decisions. And so that's, that's how it suggests you take a whack at it anyway. And thanks to Council Mackay and Council Hughes, they answered, asked a bunch of my questions. I, so my last question is around the assessment. How conservative is that? Is that the average over the last five years or the last seven years? Or how did you arrive at 2%?
The, um, it, it was sort of the last couple of years is what it's been in your right. It is a conservative number. Um, we, you know, we didn't want to assume that there was going to be higher assessment growth, um, you know, than there was going to be. So if there, if it is higher, that's one of the, that would be one thing that would bring it down, um, just automatically. Um, but we didn't want to be too, too aggressive, too, too aggressive with that. Hopefully it's higher and we all hope the assessment growth is higher.
No, no, fair enough. I, I, just a question of how you arrived at the 2%. So if it's an average over the last couple of years, that's fine.
Yeah, so one other thing I'll add is, um, one of the things they had talked about in the slide as well is that last year, um, so of course our policy has 55% of the growth revenue going basically to new business cases, of which we kiboshed everything last year. So the entire amount of assessment growth went, so that also arbitrarily reduced the tax rate. Um, that's not something that, that as a city we can continue to do indefinitely. We need to continue adding to our, to our base to be able to provide even existing services to, to a larger community base, right? So, um, that also arbitrarily brought down the tax rate last year as well.
Yep, fair enough. So I mean, to me, that's what you define in your basic scenario definition. This is what it takes to get to two. Everything goes there, right? So anyway, that's what I'm looking forward to seeing. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
All right, uh, Council Killick.
Uh, thank you. Just a question in terms of the 3% annual inflation that was forecast for next budget session. It seems like 3% is low based on what we're really seeing out in the marketplace, just our fuel costs and everything that we buy. Is, is that, um, how, how comfortable do we feel that 3% is, is going to materialize? And how, how big of a chunk of the 86%? Because that's probably largely salaries and then maybe, I don't know, 20% is what we buy? The inflation, just like to get a sense of how realistic is 3% and how big of the 86% of the pie?
Yeah, uh, thank you for the question, Council Killick, and through your worship. We had a real debate on the 3%. Like, were we coming in too low? What would happen if we come in too high? We decided to come in fairly conservative on that number. It could be higher. Like, you know, realistically, it could be four, it could be five, given what's been happening worldwide right now. So when you kind of look at our, our service delivery of the 86%, a lot of the services that we do, that we do, do are tied into those costs. The fuel costs, the labor costs, the supply costs, everything has that. We, we go to the grocery store and you buy a loaf of bread now, it's, it's not, it's not $2.99 anymore. Like, so all those things kind of are, are all chain reactions to that, to that scenario. Um, but I think at the end of the day, we kind of came, we kind of decided to come in at 3%. Um, given, I guess, more of a historical perspective. But it was, it was not a, it was not an easy determination.
Okay, so there's, there's some risk in there.
Yes, there's risk.
Uh, that, that makes it even harder. But I, I agree with everybody council owns, providing direction for budget. Uh, it really says to me, we're, puts the onus on revenue generation opportunities as well, maybe can help us. And, uh, we're, we're going to have to give that range. Um, I can align with somewhere between three and five. I've heard two, four and six. I, I think we do have to kind of coalesce around a number so that we can help administration to focus and, and not kind of take a shotgun approach, because otherwise it, it's just, uh, far too much work. You know, of spinning of wheels potentially of, we can give you too many scenarios and then it'll just make it too hard for you to do the work and too hard for us to pick a solution. So hope we can come to a agreement this evening.
Okay, uh, Council Bramansky and then Council Jolly.
Um, thank you. And again, a lot of my questions were answered through other council's questions. Uh, the number that I would go for is, uh, 2%. And the reason being, we can, we can, you know, all sit here and say we're coming out of COVID and things aren't back to normal and transit's not up, but in all fairness, everybody's suffering right now, like with things going up in price. Um, nobody's going to be able to digest the 7% tax increase. It would probably push some people right over the deep end. But anyhow, I would see that, um, you know, administration should be looking under every single rock and provide us everything they could take off and, and allow council, you know, to maybe pull some of that back. But, um, I think we have to keep it down at the normal, you know, normal tax increase that we've seen to keep the sanity of people in the population right now. So the services, um, yeah, need to be reduced and whatever operating cost, whatever you can find, I'd like to see that picture.
Thank you, Council Bramansky. Council Jolly?
Thank you. And thank you for all the questions. Um, my, they've answered my questions. Um, in terms of a number, um, I, I think I'd be kind of more aligned with the, the three to 5%. I think those, that's a realistic range, um, too, I think would be, uh, optimistic considering the situation that we're in right now. I really would like to see any of these presentations, a, a real clear breakdown of the impact of provincial downloading on our ongoing budget. I think that's really important to have here. This, this situation is not, you know, happening because of mismanagement. Um, congratulations on the awards that we got again this year. Uh, so, so I would really like to see that here. Um, and in terms of our planning for RMR, I am, I'm so proud of um, St. Albert Council for really deciding not to, to kick the can down the road. And, you know, not throw our kids under the bus in terms of, um, you know, getting ahead of infrastructure, making sure that my kids are not going to have to pay for the services that I'm using right now. So, so I really appreciate that. So that's, that's kind of where I am. I, I would like to see that, that three and five kind of bucket um, to, to get an understanding of what that means at, at both of those points.
All right, that's everybody's weighing in except me. I'm okay with four to five even. Honestly, I feel like having tax increases that are below the CPI or MPI or whatever we're calling it now, has caused us to get into this situation. And, um, I don't, I don't want to see this pushing to the next council even, right? So, um, when you, when you don't fund a city appropriately, you've got problems. And RMR is, is a perfect example. So yeah, I, I totally support keeping RMR. So we're going to have to look at service. I don't think we need to look under any more rocks. I think we've spent enough time looking under rocks. I think we need to find the new sources of revenue. And, and, and a good conversation will be how much are we going to pull out of stabilization? And how do we wean ourselves off of that? Because that's the problem. So we, if honestly, when I think about it, we probably shouldn't have used the full 2.1% like however many million last year, because now we're going to have to make up for it. So is it too late to go back to the budget adjustments? No, I'm teasing. Four to five is good with me, but I do like the idea of some scenarios with some service level reductions options. So I think that might be the best route forward. Sound good? Uh, Council Mackay, you want to make it? Yeah, I think there was some. Go ahead, Council Mackay.
I'm just looking for it here.
Through worship. Yes, sorry. On, um, on recommendation number three, where we say we're going to go back by the end of May, can you just, can we change that to, to, to Q2, to the end of Q2? Just in case it gives us, we get it by the end of May, we can do it, but it could be we're into June. I don't want to have to bring back another report. Yeah, actually. Extend it. So if we can just change that to end of Q2, it'd be great. Sure, I was going to actually say, I don't have a day in May. Ooh, that rhymes. I don't have a day in May.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was just gonna say, so you just want to change it to quarter, end of quarter.
End of June, intended to.
Are you, are we actually going to establish a range? Are we going to put three to five?
Sure, okay. Yep, it's your motion.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, uh, for legislative purposes, if you could put in the range that, um, so I guess bullet number, or number two. That council provide direction to administration related to tax increase range of three to 5% for the proposed budget.
Yeah, perfect.
I just need, Mr. Lefar, are they just doing number two as well to put the range in?
No, that's fine. Yeah.
It's okay. I know all about delays.
Well, you can start reading it and you know what it says. Yep.
Yeah, I, well, I can start the first number one anyways. That council received the report titled 2023, 2025 Municipal Operating Budget Position Overview as Information.
There you go. Number two's up there now.
That council provide direction to administration, uh, to propose a 2023 budget reflecting a tax increase range of three to 5% for the 2023 budget?
Yeah.
2023 budget, right? Twenty twenty three budget, right? Yeah. For the, I would just put in there for the proposed twenty twenty three budget.
Yeah. And?
Is it in the first one? Okay. Okay, all right, that's just not the way I would have read it, but.
No, it, it needs to be in there, because we're not proposing three to five for twenty four or twenty five. We're just focusing on one year.
First part, Madam Mayor, it's in the first part of it. It says council provide direction.
Okay, okay.
Propose the twenty twenty three budget.
There you go, and then three?
And then number three is that council direct administration to organize a committee of the whole with council by the end of quarter two, twenty twenty two, to review services and service levels and consider potential adjustments to manage the tax increase.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty three, or ongoing tax increase. Just twenty twenty three, just twenty twenty three.
If you lower the service levels for that budget.
Yeah, because the service levels could affect ongoing budgets, right? Okay, let's just leave it as this.
Okay, accept that motion and any opening arguments?
I mean, obviously, the, some of the comments that, and concerns were certainly outlined in the questions from all members of council. So I really appreciate that. I mean, this is not only our challenge, it's going to be an ongoing challenge for many municipalities all across Alberta and certainly local municipalities in other parts of the country even. And I guess the, the challenges for us is to continue to engage the community and really figure out some of our core services, what we need to do versus kind of what would be nice to have. And then we're gonna have to really start to be creative about applying our resources to accomplish that. And that's not going to be an easy feat. So I, I think I'll leave it at that for opening comments. And, and, I mean, I, I think we all realize the challenges that are facing us. And thank you administration for bringing it forward. I, I think it's, we're, we're gonna have to have these discussions and then engage with the community.
Anyone else want to weigh in? Yeah, I think we kind of already, Councilor Bramansky, go ahead.
I was just wondering for Councilor Mackay, why we can't keep it from two to four? Like, I mean, I mentioned two, why did we have to jump up that one point?
I think he was just taking consensus of the room.
Yeah, I, I was thinking the, exactly, I was taking consensus of the room, Councilor Bramansky. I don't think I want to go, I don't want to bottom end at four, but, and two to five makes it such a broad range that it makes it extremely difficult, in my opinion, for our administration. But, so if you're proposing that as a friendly, I can't accept it. But if you want to make an amendment, please feel free.
And don't forget, this isn't locking it in. No, this is still just this initial conversation, yeah.
It's very possible that with upcoming provincial election, we may see some, some, maybe some loosening in relation to some of our LGFF funding or other ongoing grants that will help municipalities. And we may find that we will be closer to two than three.
I just think it's beneficial to set lofty goals, right? Like, why not?
I, yeah, but I'll just, I'm just gonna jump in. So the motion is three to five, if you want to make an amendment, that's fine.
I'll leave it, I'll just not support it, thanks.
Councilor Hughes?
Uh, thank you. Um, Councilor Bramansky, because it's three motions in one, if you plan to not support one of them, you just need to tell the mayor that you want to have that one split out, just for procedural basis. I'm not sure if you know. The, one of the challenges we have is that the maintenance is saying two percent, but it really is closer to three. So coming in at three, while it's still a lot higher than a lot of people want, will basically just match what the, the cost of increase of just the basic maintenance of services is. And we're also telling administration to drop it by four point two percent, which is a pretty lofty goal to accomplish, right? So this is the effects of kicking the can. It's a matter of how much you want to kick the can further down the road, like, to offset it, to ease the burden. But that's just the reality of what we have right now. And I think that this discussion, I write, I'd ask administration, like, leave no stone unturned on this in, in pry for a two, even though you're saying a three, because you told us next year is a six point eight. So we're really back in the same boat next year. Where, so the more work we can do this year, the easier it could be for also figuring out, like, prioritizing for next year, because last time I checked, government didn't change that much from year to year. So the same solutions will probably be presented year after year. So there'll be a discussion of how much you want to do this year and recognize that next year we also have a serious tax increase problem coming ahead of us. So I, I would love to save two, and that's why I'm saying, we'll say three, but don't, don't stop if you can help it, because we really have to save four and a half twice, just to come down to something that the public can handle as a goal. And it will not be without impact this time, to people's things. So I wish you a lot in trying to solve this problem, bring it forward. This is not a fun discussion. I know that when people asked if I wanted to run again, this was one of the things, I knew we were coming with high tax increases this term. I knew this was gonna be a fun term, in part because the amount of debt that we've taken on. And now in part because of the decision to decrease, to kick it down the road. But it really was in our defense, in this council's defense, when it was brought forward at two and a half percent expectation that the operating funding levels would come back to a more normal level within a year or two. And now I'm hearing it's not going to happen. So when we said this, it was not just to kick it down the road, it was the up, a little optimism that it was going to be normalized and that we would not have to incur unnecessary tax increases. But if the information's now changed and we're saying those tax increases are now going to be inevitable, then obviously it's a different strategy, how we have to face the music of what's happening. So that's what we're having here. But ultimately, there, there are going to be solutions, it's just going to be a matter of what we prioritize. That's it, thank you.
Well said, Councilor Hughes. I see no more hands up. Call for the vote. Oh, Councilor Killick, sorry, do you want to jump in?
It's just really great discussion today. Tough numbers to look at. It just shows such a large percentage of our budget is locked in on just operating. And another large chunk of it is locked in on maintaining the services that we already have. And so it leaves us very little room to, to negotiate, especially in light as, as been mentioned about downloading costs from the province to the, to the city and the inflation challenges we're looking at. These are, these are challenging times and it's going to be a very challenging budget discussion. I appreciate all the information and, and certainly support the range that we've given to administration to try and help give them good guidance. So look forward to the discussion going forward.
Sorry, and I didn't give you a chance to close, Councilor Mackay.
I, I mean, I think my closing argument, actually, I think Councilor Killick hit it pretty much. The only thing I was gonna add is that, and it's the reality that it's getting expensive everywhere. And whether it's in our, in it's our home services or the services that, that are impacting us as a municipality, it's increasingly becoming challenging. But that doesn't say that we can't continue to look for creative solutions around addressing some of these challenges. And I'm trusting administration and I'm trusting this council to go through it. And you're right, Councilor Killick, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions. There's always difficulties in, in balancing our, our budget realities with impacts like decreased revenues, increased service demands or the services that our residents require. And then added on, which has been said a couple of times, when we are faced with unfunded provincial services that are downloaded onto our municipalities, it does, doesn't help, it just continues to make that challenge even higher. But I, again, I trust administration and I'm, it's going to be a difficult conversation, but we're, it's something that we're going to be faced with. And it'll be up to us to come up with that final number.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes by majority. That was eight point three, eight point four was on consent. Motion was that council direct the chief administrative officer to take the necessary actions to withdraw the notice of intent to annex land from the city of Edmonton. Very unfortunate, but. Eight point five, Fire Hall One options, so presentation by Mr. Benson. Hello, Christian. And counsel, just so you know, if there's any questions that the city manager feels need to be dealt with in camera, we have that option ready to go. So go ahead, Christian.
I, I think you guys can see the presentation, correct?
Yep, we sure can, yeah.
So thank you very much this evening. I am here to present options for the former Fire Hall Number One site. I'm Christian Benson, Manager of Investment, Interaction and Growth with the city's Economic Development Department. St. Albert's former Fire Hall Number One, currently located at eighteen Servants and Churchill Avenue, was originally constructed in nineteen sixty two and was renovated several times in the last sixty years. The building is considered past its life expectancy and has been replaced by the new Fire Hall One site on Gate Ave. In the twenty twenty two budget, Fire Hall One was approved for decommissioning and demolition. And this presentation today is to provide counsel an update on the future of the former Fire, Fire Hall One site and scenarios for future development. Guiding considerations for the future of the site include adding community and social benefit and outcome designed, used, or designated use that would provide, provide or support social benefit to the community, such as municipal services, social support services or affordable housing, increased population and density downtown, and outcome and designated use that would provide a substantial number of new homes and new residents to downtown, increased taxable assessment and outcome and designated use that would provide the highest and best use of the land, and generate revenue and reduce cost and outcome that would result in divestment of the property for the highest value. The former Fire Hall One site has several considerations to address. The Fire Hall is a part of a larger municipal reserve pulse parcel. It's a seventeen point eight four acre site that includes Granadier Park, treat areas and trails. Subdivision and removal of MR is required for the Fire Hall to be separated from its larger park parcel. In any scenario, future redevelopment of the Fire Hall One site consideration must be given to limit the impact to Granadier Park. Administration has developed two scenarios for subdividing the Fire Hall One parcel from the larger site, a zero point five seven acre parcel and a one point zero two acre parcel. A zero point five seven acre parcel shown on the left would follow the physical footprint of the existing fire hall and parking lot. This option would have the least impact in the surrounding MR. However, this parcel would limit the return from a potential sale of the site as well as limit future redevelopment opportunities due to the site configuration and limited space. A second scenario, shown on the right, was developed to maximize redevelopment opportunities while minimizing impact to the greater Granadier site. It should be noted that in any scenario where the city divests of the Fire Hall One site, it's still required to be, it would be required to remove MR designation and subdivide the parcel from the greater site. Administration has developed three scenarios for the future use of the former Fire Hall One site. The first scenario is divestment of the property in an as-is scenario. In this scenario, Fire Hall One could be placed on the market in an as-is condition where potential buyers would purchase the property for preservation, adaptive reuse, renovation or possible demolition and redevelopment. This scenario would reduce staffing resources and demolition costs. However, the building is considered detrimental to the market price of the property and would result in a lower sales price versus bare land. Sale as-is would also reduce the future development opportunities, impacting downtown density and possible commercial opportunities. As-is would also be considered at a lower assessed value, which would impact municipal tax revenue for the future of the site. Until the property is sold, the city will continue to incur monthly operating and maintenance costs for the site. With the building sold as-is, there is a longer self, uh, sales period that's anticipated. If the building were to continue in its current form, it would be considered to be as less beneficial to downtown redevelopment versus a newly developed site. Scenario two sees the removal of MR and subdividing of the parcel, decommissioning and demolition of the existing building and zone to direct control mixed use, DCMU, for, for redevelopment. This scenario provides the greatest flexibility for redevelopment, site density and mixed use of the site. In addition, demolition of the existing fire hall adds value to the divestment of the site. It would net a higher sales price, as it's anticipated to also be a quicker sale than scenario one. DCMU allows for commercial, residential or mixed use to redevelopment of the site up to a maximum of six stories. This scenario would require more administrative resources for the tendering and project management of the site. However, the capital charter was approved in the twenty twenty two budget and already incorporated into the work plan for the Capital Projects Office. In scenario three, the city retains ownership of the Fire Hall for future purposes. It's still recommended that the site undergo MR designation removal and subdividing from the greater Granadier Park site. With this scenario, the city should look at leasing the site. Abatement activities is recommended, as well as renovations to bring up, bring the building up to commercial leasing standard. An additional assessment of the building condition is likely required to identify required site improvements. Alternatively, demolition could occur for the building and the land could be retained for future city use. This scenario is considered to be the lowest positive benefit to the community as well as having the lowest economic impact with continued operating costs to be incurred by the city. As per the agenda report for this item, administration recommends the following. In short, recommendations include a public hearing for the removal of MR designation from the property title and advertisement for this public hearing following the guidelines established by the Municipal Government Act, Section six, seven, four, three. In addition, recommendations include that administration proceeds with the twenty twenty two RMR charter for the decommissioning, demolition of the existing building at the former Fire Hall One site. Other future considerations for the site include recommendations for scenario two, which would see administration proceed with decommissioning and demolition this summer, as well as the subdivision of the property into a one point zero two acre parcel designated DCMU land use. It's anticipated that removal of MR and redistricting of the property will take approximately six months. However, demolition can, can occur concurrently with this process. The bare land vacant site could be listed on the market and for divestment in accordance with the council policy, C E D O three land transactions in early twenty twenty three. That's everything I have, so I'd be happy to take questions at this point.
Thank you. So all three scenarios include the subdivision, like separating out the Fire Hall site from Granadier Park. All three include that, right?
Uh, yes, Mayor Heron, absolutely.
And all three include the removal of the MR?
Correct.
All right, so then the, just the question is, do we sell it with the building, sell it without the building or lease it?
Correct.
As I understand, okay, I'm opening up to questions, Councilor Killick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two questions. The plan is still to close the, the road, the median in front of the old Fire Hall before we would sell it? That, that's a kind of a funny intersection that's there just for the fire trucks? Is that still the plan when we offer the land for sale to close that off?
To Councilor Killick, I believe so. I, I have some colleagues from engineering on the line, so they can hop on. My, my understanding from conversations is, yeah, that, that left into the site would be closed.
My, my concern is that some of the land value may be changed significantly if it's only a right in, right, right out access to that piece of land and want to make sure that when we go to offer it for sale, whenever that is, that it's properly represented to, to the potential buyers.
So is there somebody maybe from engineering that could jump in this? It's Donnie.
Through, through the chair, to Councilor Killick, that needs to be evaluated based on the land use designation and the need of creating the additional access if required. But right now, it's only contemplated to be having a right in, right out. Obviously, it'll have an impact on the future buyers, but we need to look at it closely when the additional data comes in, in terms of what's the use.
Okay, thank you. And the, this is kind of a recommended motion question or by the, the way it's worded. I'm concerned that by removing. I'm concerned that by removing the, I understand why we're removing the designation for the park so that we can do the subdivision. But what guarantee do we give residents that we will then, once it's subdivided, that we put the rest of the park back in to municipal reserve? It would be nice if we had that as a fourth step, or does that come after the public hearing that we put the park back into municipal reserve?
So I can answer that question through the chair. We would only be looking at removing the MR designation on that particular parcel and not on the park itself. So we would just go in and remove the designation on the approximately is it one, one acre, Christian? So that's the portion that we would remove. We wouldn't remove it off of the rest of Grenadier Park.
Okay, thank you, but the motion doesn't say that. The motion says we're removing the designation from the total plan block and lot. So I just want to make sure that i- if your answer is we're just removing it from that part, Mr. LaFleur, maybe?
Yeah. My apologies, sorry, I, you won't be able to see me. There's something wrong with my Zoom connection. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yep, we can.
So the the fact of the matter is that even if the ultimate intention is to return the bulk of the parcel to MR, you can't take an MR designation off part of a parcel. The MR designation is on the whole parcel. All you can do is ask the registrar of land titles to take off the MR designation from the existing parcel. Now, that being said, if the intention is to be sure the rest of it is park, if that's the intention, it doesn't have to be MR to be park, right? Under both the current and the proposed new parks by law, you can have lands that are parkland that aren't necessarily MR. So there's a number of different ways if council wishes to be sure that what's what's left, once the MR designation goes off the part that's the footprint of the building, if you want the rest of it to be kept as parkland, you've got a couple of different options to do that. You can, you can put MR on the parcel after you've had it taken off. You can do that after, after some, but first you have to subdivide out. And then what you want the MR to go on, you can pass a bylaw, actually it is to put the MR back on that portion. It's a complex process and the reason it is is because the Municipal Government Act from a public policy point of view doesn't like municipalities removing MR designations. That's why it makes you jump through all these hoops. That's why it says you can only do certain things with MR. That's why it says even after you've sold MR, even the proceeds can only be used for parks or recreation, outdoor recreation. So that's the reason why, but there are ways around it. So I guess that's a long-winded way of saying through the chair to the councillor that if if that's council's desire to have the remaining surrounding part, you know, part of the parcel that's not building footprint kept as parkland, that can be done in a couple of different ways. Just give administration your desire and we can make it happen.
Can can we do that today to to give that guarantee? Like, again, I understand why we take MR off and we subdivide, but I want to make sure that we clearly put MR back on to the remaining parkland to guarantee that for the residents, because it, taking it off just without a guarantee to put it back on, can we, we add that in as a fourth bullet in today's recommended motions?
So the answer is that legally you can. If you'd like us to work on crafting some language while you continue talking, I will do that.
Okay, would it be putting MR back on or just rezoning it to be park?
No, what what we would do is give administration instruction to come back to council after the public hearing and after, it's a little difficult because we don't know if after the public hearing, council is actually going to give the instruction to take the MR off. We don't even know that at this point, because you have to listen to the public hearing. And as we all know, you have to keep an open mind to what the public says. So you may decide after the public hearing not to instruct us to remove the MR. So it's a little hard to craft language today that says put MR back on when you haven't even made the decision to take it off in the first place. We'll try if you want, I understand that.
I thought we were making a decision to take MR off today.
All you're doing now is you're instructing that a public hearing be held. You cannot remove the MR until you've listened to the public at a public hearing. And you can't prejudge what you will do after you've listened to the public. That's fundamental administrative law. So, you know, that's why it's a little hard to craft. I'll try if you'd like, it's going to look a little funny, but.
I just, I appreciate that. I I'm trying to, trying to get to a place where I can
I understand.
Give the residents confidence that once we take that off and do the subdivision that we're not putting, we're not getting rid of the whole park.
Why don't I, why don't I suggest, because we're not removing it today, that Counselor Killick sits down with you after this meeting sometime, but before September, like we have till September for the public hearing, to craft a notice of motion?
Yeah, we could certainly do that if you're, if you're needable to that council.
And the notice of motion could come after the public, he can give it today or tomorrow or next week, but that motion wouldn't come until after the public hearing.
Right, and it could be debated at that time. It could be, it could be all tied up in a neat bowl after you've had the public hearing, if you're persuaded at that time to remove the MR.
Yeah, that would be good. I appreciate providing that guarantee to our residents.
No, I appreciate you bringing that up because I will totally support that. Depends on what it is. Is that all you had for now? Okay, Counselor Bermansky, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. Do you have appraisals on the piece of land in all the different scenarios of the valuation?
Through the chair.
We haven't seen any numbers, it seems.
Through the chair, that was provided through confidential slot memo as the city has market valuation data within the appraisal.
Okay, on all the scenarios. Pardon me?
We got it last week, did you not get it?
Okay, I do, I don't have that one, no. So, okay, I'll appreciate getting that, please. And then the other question is, if you're going to the more uniform, you know, like where it's the full one point, whatever acre, you're removing trees and such in that area. It's quite moist in that they have a water, a large amount of water there, do they not? Would you have to fill in that area where trees are removed? Is that quite costly to do that as well?
From my understanding, there hasn't been a geotech assessment done on that site. There is a retaining wall in the back of the development in Fire Hall One. I think it would be incumbent on on the purchaser to to any condition of redevelopment. They would have to assess value and impact of the the property. So long-winded way of saying that it'd be, it'd be the buyer incumbent on the buyer to to develop with conditions on site.
Okay, I thought just you have the two choices of the A or the B, whether we sold it as a, you know, the odd shaped parcel or the other one.
Correct, and really the the two valuations were on the physical footprint, the lowest amount of subdivision we could occur on site with physical building and parking lot. And then the other scenario was just, it's it's more market and amicable for for the developer to have a squared out site. And we've seen through divestment of city-owned properties that that type of site in a one acre parcel is highest valuation from the market.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm seeing no more questions. So Counselor Jolly, you ready to jump in with the motion?
That a public hearing pursuant to subsection six seventy-four one of the MGA be set for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two in council chambers during the the regular council meeting scheduled for that date on the matter of a resolution to approve making available for potential sale, lease or other disposition of the municipal reserve property legally described as Plan eight zero two, 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 three, one, block one, lot sixty-three MR. And B, directing the CAO to request that the registrar of land titles remove the municipal reserve designation from the title to the subject property. Two, that administration undertake the required advertising for the public hearing, including posting notices on or near the subject municipal reserve property pursuant to subsection six seventy-four three of the MGA. And three, that administration proceed with the decommissioning and demolition of Fire Hall One as per the twenty twenty-two RMR far zero two six project charter.
Awesome, thank you. Any opening comments?
Thanks to administration for bringing this forward. I didn't have any questions today because I'm saving those for September nineteenth. I think that's when really the the details are going to matter in terms of a decision today. The only decision that we're making is the scheduling of a public hearing. So I really look forward to hearing from from residents about their thoughts on the site along with more information about what it would mean to to make these changes. So I look forward to that.
Anyone else in on debate? Nope, we're also making the decision to tear down the building today. Yeah, it was in the budget, yeah, just to proceed with it. All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. Now we have the fun topic of Alberta Provincial Police Service. And Mr. Julie, you're presenting this one?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Heron, I will be, but I'm joined by Aaron Geisbrecht as well. So hopefully we can answer any questions council may have, but am I okay to just dive into it, I guess?
Yeah, just go ahead.
Yep, so essentially today's purpose is to facilitate discussion with city council regarding council's position regarding a potential Alberta provincial police service. As councils aware, this concept stems from a recommendation from the Fair Deal Panel that was established by the provincial government early within their mandate and then followed up with a transition study completed by Price Waterhouse Coopers and released in October of twenty twenty-one. Some of the conclusions from that study include that a provincial police service could have a lower annual policing cost to deliver equivalent services to the RCMP. The premier and Minister of Justice have publicly stated there would be a net zero impact to municipalities. And they also conclude that Alberta policing costs can decrease by twenty-four million dollars per year compared to the projected RCMP arrangement while increasing the number of frontline members of the provincial police service deployed in Alberta and increasing local communities' input into policing priorities through local police commissions. The attached analysis completed by Alberta municipalities of the study focuses on three pillars. Police, governance and oversight, service levels and policing costs. Alberta municipalities analysis notes alignment with the PWC report in several areas, but they also know gaps in that the proposal seems to ignore existing governance mechanisms. For example, that communities may have set up policing committees to engage with the RCMP already. Lack of clarity regarding public reporting requirements and concern regarding the accuracy of the cost estimates for provincial police service and what is and what isn't included. In Q one of this year, the Ministry of Justice and Solicitor General held a number of information sessions throughout Alberta to share findings from the study. One of these sessions was held in St. Albert on February third. Since completing information sessions, Alberta municipalities and rural municipalities of Alberta have each established positions related to the future potential for an Alberta provincial police service. In the Minister of Public Safety Canada's mandate letter from Prime Minister Trudeau in December of twenty twenty-one, the minister has been tasked with conducting an assessment of contract policing in consultation with provinces, territories, municipalities, indigenous partners and stakeholders. The National Police Federation, the certified bargaining agent for the RCMP, has launched an advocacy campaign to keep the RCMP in Alberta. Within that campaign, they cite a Polara online survey from October twenty-seventh to November fourth that eighty-four percent of respondents want to keep the RCMP and nine percent of respondents do not support Alberta provincial police service. City administration is seeking council direction and feedback on if council would like to take a position on this topic, potentially including a menu of options, support the continuance of the RCMP contract in Alberta and oppose a provincial police service or oppose this particular concept of the provincial police service or support the implementation of a provincial police service or advocate to provincial and regional partners that regional policing be explored or another position of council's choosing. Another couple of options are that council request further information from Alberta Justice and Solicitor General prior to taking a position or thirdly, to take no position and to defer to Alberta municipalities and its member RFD position and continue to monitor the topic. Another note not identified in the administrative background or is that the city's twenty twenty-one satisfaction survey stated that more than ninety percent of residents feel safe or very safe within our community. If council wishes to take a position on this topic at this time, city administration will work with the mayor's office to prepare correspondence to the Minister of Justice and Solicitor General, articulating the position and support any additional advocacy efforts council may wish to take. Mr. Geisbrecht and I are be able to to answer any questions council may have, but we may require council information requests depending on the question, just given the volume of information generated and available on this topic at this time. And that concludes our presentation, Madam Mayor. We look forward to receiving council's direction on this topic, should council wish to take a position at this time. Thank you.
Well. This is going to be an interesting conversation. I mean, I'm so ingrained in this topic over the last six months or so. I'm going to open it up to council for questions or if you even want to give feedback on some of the options that were laid out, support, oppose. Regional policing is is interesting conversation, so who wants to kick it off? Counselor Jolly?
I think I've been really open about my thoughts on this, so I'm happy to start. I I would like to see the city send a letter opposing the the current plan that we're on. I attended the information session on February third in St. Albert and I really appreciate, Mr. Julie, that you called it an information session. What it was billed as is a consultation session, which is not what happened in that room. Basically, we were given, these are two choices and the same choice, those two choices led down the same path. The the messaging that cost to municipalities will not increase is misleading because it does not address the fact that the cost to Albertans will increase and separating those two is. I'm not going to finish that sentence. I think it's also really important that St. Albert residents understand that we would be losing millions of dollars a year as Albertans in federal funding should the the province go ahead with this this plan. So so that that's where my position lies. I know we've had great discussions about opportunities in terms of regional policing. I don't think that is off the table necessarily for me, you know, if if we have those conversations with the local RCMP and really understand the needs of our local community, I think that has value. But the current plan that is on the table does not fit with the needs of of St. Albert and as we know residents across Alberta. And we've seen that through the, I think, dozens at this point, letters we've received from municipalities across the province who have told the province that they oppose this plan. And I very much support the AUMA and RMA, or sorry, Alberta municipalities and RMA positions on on this. You know. I don't even know what, I don't want to call it a plan, but this this push forward, it's really, really disappointing. So that's what I said.
Okay, thank you. Clear and concise. Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While I certainly support Counselor Jolly's position on this, I think we as a municipality should make our our opinions heard. I think from my perspective, I'd love to see in the letter just a a request that that if they're looking for efficiencies in the terms of policing service delivery, that they focus more on regional service delivery than than a wholesale change out of the RCMP. I think there's more dividends to be bought in that service delivery model than a wholesale change. And I think we have a knowledgeable councillor on our council that could bring value to that discussion, quite honestly. Thank you.
Counselor Mackay?
I don't think Counselor Killick would add any. Thank you, Counselor Broadhead. Madam Mayor, I I think everybody knows where my position lies on on this. And I I just truly believe, and it is unfortunate, that when the provincial government put forward the PWC study, they really just kept and arrived at a yes or a no and no really. a yes or a no, and no really look at other alternatives, or really actually defined what the problem was, because I'm still at a loss to actually determine what the problem is with the RCMP maintaining their contract with policing Albertans and particularly St. Albertans. Because, I mean, one thing we have to continue to remind our residents and particularly our frontline officers, this is not about the RCMP members that go to work every day and provide a great service to our community. And I know every one of our counselors is behind them on 100%. But we struggle with, and thank you, Counselor Jolly. I also attended the I guess, I don't even call it information session, because when we asked questions, we didn't get any information back. We were just told that those questions were out of the scope of the presentation and that we needed to respond to their questions. And so we really didn't, really didn't find out any more information or receive any assurances, what form they were going to roll out. So I mean, our challenge is, is obviously, we don't have information that's really allows us to make a decision or any comment in relation to the provincial government's study. So without additional information, then I'm left with saying, I would, why wouldn't we continue to support the RCMP in our community and in our province? Now, one of the things I've consistently said is, is that some point in time, there's going to be a discussion, maybe perhaps at the federal level, where they can no longer provide that level of service, because in reality, there's numerous challenges that we always have when we square federal, provincial and policing priorities, municipal policing priorities. There's always that challenge, and you can see it not only with the determination now by the province of British Columbia, when they came out with their recently released report, and potentially Saskatchewan is looking at something as well. So the reality might be forced upon us anyways when the federal government decides that they want to get out of municipal or provincial contract policing, but that's not what's before us. The decision is right now whether or not we support the RCMP continuing in our community. And based on what's in front of us, I would 100% support the RCMP as our policing service. Now, if we were allowed to have input, I still strongly believe that the alternative that's not on the table is a regional policing that allows us to truly in a region. We see the benefits already with the Metropolitan Region Servicing Plan around the ability to look at our, and look at our local issues and apply local solutions to those things. So I would support a regional policing concept, but unfortunately, I don't think that's on the table. So right now in front of us, we have whether we will oppose and support continuing the RCMP in our community, of which I would continue to strongly go forward with. And I don't think we are, there's no sense in going back to the Alberta Justice Solicitor General and ask for additional information, because we'll just get the same information. So I mean, I already believe that the Alberta Municipalities has put forward a pretty strong policy position, and I don't see why we would go against that. And I would just say perhaps all we would need to do from an action standpoint is have the mayor say that we support the Alberta Municipalities' policy position.
It would be very difficult for me to send a letter to Alberta Municipalities, saying I don't support the policy.
Well, you're a different entity.
I know, different hats. Counselor Killig?
Thank you, and I agree with everything that my colleague has said here. So just simply put for me, I think Alberta Municipalities has done a great job of articulating their concerns and many unanswered questions. I think we should align with that. We should be able to write a letter that says we do. And we don't need to kind of elaborate any further. I think those questions and concerns have been well articulated, both in Alberta Municipalities and the rural municipalities. And we should align along those lines.
Counselor Hughes or Counselor Bromansky, any thoughts?
Just one thing. Sometimes we think with writing a letter, it has no impact, but I think that voicing our opinion is a good thing. And, you know, we wrote a letter about the coal mining, and there has been a change in the direction of coal mining. Did it go because we wrote it? Probably not, but we were a contributor to pressuring the government to rethink where it's going. So I think that even though it seems meaningless to some people, like you're just writing a letter, sometimes you still, you have to do what you can do, and this is something that you can do.
Here's my thoughts. I think we should write a letter. I think the letter should say something about what problem are we trying to solve. I took a quick look at the BC report, and they actually identified a problem that they were trying to solve. Whether it's true or not, they were, you know, worried about systemic racism in BC. But of course, a lot of the stuff I heard on the news was examples from the 90s. I do believe the RCMP has made huge efforts to overcome real or perceived systemic racism issues. But I do think we should say something in our letter, like what problem are we trying to solve? And I mean, I have asked Minister of Justice flat out, and he admitted that this was a political decision. And you know, the Fair Deal Panel, which is what kicked this off, provincial policing was 14th out of 15 in priorities for them to move forward, and only supported by 34% of people that participated in the Fair Deal Panel. And then, of course, the Federation of, National Federation of Policing, their study even showed less support for this. I want, I do want to align with Alberta Municipalities, because I agree, I think they've done a lot of work and have a good policy position, but one thing they actually stopped short of doing was actually blatantly saying, we do support the RCMP. And so we could do that. I'm seeing a lot of yeah, in St. Albert, we feel that we're safe. They serve us well. We have a good relationship. We feel that we do get to set priorities for our community, and we have a lot of local autonomy. So I think those kind of words could be used in support for the RCMP. One thing that Alberta Municipalities did not do, and I have been pushing to limited success, was to actually go through the Price Waterhouse Cooper model and give our input. We haven't done that. There are pieces of it when they talks about, you know, the different scenarios for Level 1 and Level 2 officers. We have not said, and I haven't heard any municipality say, we want them all to be Level 1. And so because everybody's so focused on on opposing the model, they haven't said how they would like to see the model roll out. And that's always been my problem. I think I can tell you right now, from Alberta Municipalities' point of view, they feel like any input on the model is kind of like giving it a thumbs up, but it's not. I think if our hands are tied behind our back and we are forced to have provincial policing, we better damn well excuse me, I've never done that before. We better have a say in how it looks. So Erin, you know, we haven't really talked about this, about Level 1 versus Level 2 officers. And when you looked at the org chart, they have a provincial police commission. They haven't said, and we could ask again, but they won't give us the answer. So why don't we just say, we want this provincial police commission to be nonpartisan. Not appointed by the GOA, but you know, you can some appointment process that's nonpartisan. Same with the local commissions. Do we want this council to say who sits on the local commission, like we do with our policing committee? Or do we want it to be essentially nonpartisan, or the local level is nonpartisan? But anyway, we need input, and we have not done that. So Erin, I would love to see some of your thoughts on this. One of the other parts is the complaint process totally bypasses the local commissions. I would strongly say complaints have to go through local commissions first, and because quite, as we've seen with our policing committee, some of these local complaints can be solved very quickly by the local detachment commander. Period. It stops there. So these are just a couple of examples of where I think we need to have our input. Just, so we could have a two-part letter, Trevor, that says, we oppose it, we support the RCMP, but if you insist on going ahead, here's our thoughts. And so I don't know if we have to have a separate conversation around what our thoughts might be, but I'm sure, honestly, to tell you the truth, Erin and you, Trevor, could figure that out. And then finally, I'd love to get, and maybe it comes from me, a notice of motion at the EMRB to ask the servicing committee to explore regional policing. So if council is okay, we could put that motion at the MRB table. It's kind of like, I do have, you know, our contract, Erin, give me a nod if I'm right, with the federal government goes to 2030 or 31, somewhere around there, 32? Okay. So we've got time. But I do have this feeling that in 2032, things could very well drastically change with the federal government not doing contract policing. And we should be prepared for that. And regional policing, to me, is the best solution. We would have so much to say. I would not want to just contract EPS. That's not what I want. I want to have a say at that table, whether, you know, the surrounding municipalities get a rotating seat on their commission, or we all get a seat on the commission, however that looks. So it's a conversation that Edmonton would have to be very open to. So thoughts, Trevor, on how to get that onto the EMRB table?
Madam Mayor, I'll just speak to process, but I think it's similar to council's process. I think, again, there's a 14-day period to provide that notice and and a backgrounder that needs to be developed, and then it gets deliberated at at the EMRB board meeting. So I think the next board meeting isn't scheduled till till June.
Okay. Mr. Hiltz and I are meeting with Mayor Amrigeet Sohie and the city manager of Edmonton. Maybe we should have that quick conversation, because if they're completely opposed to it, then the notice of motion will fail at EMRB. But you know, even if it fails, it's probably worth the conversation. So I wouldn't mind seeing the recommended motion that's in front of us. Trevor talks about reviewing preparing a letter, and I think that will get thrown on the floor and probably pass. But I wouldn't mind an added motion that and maybe it's a notice of motion. I'm not sure. Let me think about it, about regional policing.
I would potentially suggest that, but I mean, there's nothing that you couldn't put in your letter to say that, you know, even though, like, what problem are you trying to solve? But here's the question we are, but we're also disappointed that you didn't look at another model like regional policing.
Yeah, that could go in there too.
In your lip. And then, I mean, but if you're going to put a notice of motion, I think maybe from a process perspective, I think we do put a notice of motion in, but then directing for EMRB to look at, and then that way we can have a stance. We have council's approval, take it to EMRB, so that that just kind of adds a little bit more weight in the process.
When I met with Minister Shandros, and I mentioned regional policing, he and his staff got quite happy and excited about that idea. So I don't even know if they would be prepared to fund the study like they did with Transat. But I think if they go provincial and we separate it with a regional, that would just be easier for them too. So you want to make a motion? Just the one that's there, nothing to do with me putting a motion on the EMRB table? Or do you want to wait on that one? Okay, all right. All right. Oh, Counselor Bromansky, your hands up before I go to a motion.
Sorry, I just had one question. If you're there were so many good ideas here from all of council today, and I thought it, you know, I would see it as the letter should be from the council, you know, the city council and mayor of St. Albert, not not emphasizing, you know, reflecting Alberta municipalities, because we have so many good ideas just from the city. So I think the letter might be more valued just from us, rather than saying we're supporting someone else. And then the other question is, with your regional idea, what's this region? Like, where are the boundaries for that? Would that be included in the letter too, or not?
I don't think we're putting the regional stuff in the letter.
No?
Okay. Regional policing would go to EMRB first, and it would be the 13-member municipalities.
I would just like the letter to just be from the city, not saying we're supporting.
Just from the city. Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Jolly.
The council directed administration to prepare a letter for Mayor Herron's review, approval and submission to the Minister of Justice and Solicitor General, articulating council's position on a provincial police service.
Did we talk too fast? Can you get all the notes down, Trevor?
Yeah, no, good conversation, council, and thanks for providing some clarity. So I just, I'll just repeat back a little bit so that we're 100% sort of clear, but just referring to kind of the menu of options that administration identified in the backgrounder, I've heard council supportive of 1A and 1B, and then kind of in the back pocket to be explored, potentially explored as an alternative would be 1D, so that might be coming forward later. And just again, focusing on the lack of a clearly defined problem.
Right. And are we going to put some input on to how we want to see the proposed model roll out if they go forth?
Yeah, if that's the will of council, and council can trust Mr. Geisberg and I to articulate that, then I think we can certainly do that.
Erin, go ahead.
I think the only thing I wanted to add was just around the analysis that might be needed to look at the exact model of what council would want, and then how we would articulate that in the letter. I'm just not sure if the timing's all going to work out, if depending on the timing on one council, we want to get this letter out. It may take some time to look at what's been proposed, and then giving our feedback, administrative feedback to council as to what we think about, you know, kind of that that tiered policing model, or the commission, or how that how that local governance would work. That may take some time. So I think it depends.
Yeah, why don't we counsel, a suggestion would be that we send the letter opposing the proposed model, supporting our St. Albert RCMP, and say in it that a follow-up letter is coming on our input onto the proposed model. Yeah. And then the follow-up letter, if it needs to come to council, that would be fine if if you want to just slot your thoughts, and we all agree, then I trust you, Erin, but does that sound good, council? Okay. Okay. I accept your motion. Go ahead.
I think most of my debate comments were said earlier. Ultimately, I'm really disappointed in the absence of consultation before this plan was rolled out. You know, we have incredible people in the city of St. Albert and across Alberta that could have provided feedback to the province if they were looking to improve services or reduce costs in Alberta, and that didn't happen. And, you know, we're seeing this huge pushback against that plan because of the lack of consultation. And I am happy to put this council's kind of name on that list of opposing municipalities. Thank you.
All right, anyone else have any comments? No, I think most of us said it during our conversation, so nothing further, so I will call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion passes unanimously. Okay. I think next is, yes. 9.1 was on consent, which was Erin Ridge North. I'll read the motion. That bylaw 17, 2022, being amendment 12 to the Erin Ridge North area structure plan be read at first time, and that bylaw 18, 2022, being amendment 212 to the land use bylaw, schedule A, be read a first time, and that a public hearing on both these bylaws be scheduled for June 7, 2022. Okay, and 9.2 was pulled off consent by Counselor Bromansky and Counselor Hughes. Counselor Bromansky had some follow-up motions, so considering we debated this a couple of weeks ago, I'll go straight to you, Counselor Bromansky. I'm just going to pull up your motions too. I'm just going to pull up your motions too. We all have them. So councillor Bermansky, your first part of your motion was to refer back to administration for further.
I can read it, I have it printed out here if you'd like.
Yeah, I, I, what I'm just saying is, is the first part was to refer back, and then the second parts were, like, then subsequent were different areas of suggestion for what to refer back to.
Correct, yeah.
I think what we should do legislatively is split this, and if the motion to refer back to administration passes, then we can go through your, your individual points. Does that sound fair?
Sounds fair, yes, thanks.
Okay, so why don't you just read the first part into the record?
Okay. That the parks bylaw 07, 2022 is redirected back to administration to sharpen concise language prior to council's final approval.
Awesome, okay. All right, I'll accept that. Sorry, this is an amendment to third reading, just so everybody, sorry, what do you mean, what do you mean? Because we're at third reading, and this is a proposed amendment.
No, this is not a, this has nothing to do with amending the parks bylaw. This has to do with referring it back to administration, basically to start from scratch and do a revised one.
So these aren't, so it wouldn't be amendments? It would be, if, if all these things go back, then you would be coming back with a new bylaw for, for a second, third reading?
Yeah, that's correct, because there's no, there's no precise language in the motion, which is fine, it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, no, that's fine, yeah. Okay, thanks for that clarification. Okay, councillor Bermansky, awesome. Go ahead with your opening comments.
Okay, so my opening comments, I've went over this bylaw several times, I've read it over several times, and the original bylaw, although it was, you know, formed quite some time ago, there was amendments done in several years since, and the, the article, the bylaw as we have it is a four-page document that's very clear, so people can see, you know, what the laws are, what, what's a, what's okay and what's not okay. The new bylaw is 12 pages and nothing's clear, and, or well, a lot of things aren't clear in it. My concern is excess enforcement, and, you know, and even a letter we received from a, you know, from a citizen the other day, and, you know, they don't want police out there policing their parks when they don't know what they're doing wrong. So I want people to be able to have, you know, to feel comfortable in the parks, if we have a straightforward language, you know, if you're doing this, this is a penalty, otherwise we leave you alone. The way it's set right now, the officers have the power to come out and, and, you know, give someone a, a ticket to appear in court, because they don't even know what the penalty is, because there's nothing listed for it. So there's just many inconsistencies, and I want to make it fair and comfortable for citizens. So it just needs to be cleaner.
All right. Anyone else want to weigh in on their redirect back to administration? Councillor Hughes?
Yeah, I think that redirect back to administration, in many ways, the, really the motions that follow are what's going to tell administration what needs to be changed. So while this is a standalone motion, it's also not, because it's about change this, and these are the things that we want changed. So if, if you agree with what the, what comes next, I guess, then you'd vote in favor of this. And there's quite a few elements in there that I think could be changed. The very first one she comes forward with is, is very valid, about the littering. So I'm going to be supporting this, because I, I do see where this could be tightened. I think that councillor Bermansky, you have a very good point, and she has gone through it with a fine-tooth comb to figure out exactly where the clarities are, to not just go back and fix it, figure it out yourself, that what's going to follow is a very specific list of what her, councillor Bermansky's issues appear to be with the bylaw. So I'm knowing what's coming next. Personally, I'm comfortable saying, let's make this right, even if it me, the changes that need to be made aren't that long, it can easily come back in the same month and be approved. It's not like it's a difficult task to make these type of changes, in the event that they are debated. And councillor Bermansky, in the event that this doesn't pass, I'd recommend you give notice of motion for those specific, and reopen the bylaw, because that can also happen, doesn't have to happen tonight in that event. So, but I, I think that what comes next is valid to be having a discussion about and to tighten up a couple of the issues, so it's just fair for everybody who's trying to follow the rules. That's it.
All right. I'm seeing no one weighing in. Councillor Hughes, councillor Bermansky, councillor Hughes is correct, if you want to give notice of motion, but council can see them, if they want to debate them at all, they will vote in favor of this. If they don't want to debate them, vote against it, and I see no need for a notice of motion. I see no one jumping in. Councillor Killick, go ahead, yeah.
I, I'd just like to ask administration for comments on some of the things that have been put forward in, in the notice here. How would we handle, if, you know, we have signs up that, I'll just use a golf example, we have signs up in the park that says no golf. If somebody is out there golfing, and bylaw officer walks by and says, hey, you're not allowed to do that, how would we treat that under the current bylaw? Is this a longstanding gap, or?
Thank you for the question, councillor Killick, and through your worship and the rest of council. Turn this over to Amanda to provide some context.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie, and, and through the chair to councillor Killick. The example notwithstanding is golf is prohibited in the current bylaw, as well as the proposed new one. Generally speaking, enforcement does take an education-forward approach to enforcement in our park system. But maybe I could ask Aaron Geisberg to, to comment more on the specifics of that.
Yeah, and, and Matt, I appreciate that, but the, the question is specifically, as councillor Bermansky has asked in her email, it's, it, we have that it's not allowed, but there's no penalty stated in the bylaw.
Oh, apologies for misunderstanding the question, councillor Killick. If you, and just perhaps not understanding where some of the confusion may lie, if you read in schedule A, for all offenses that do not have a specified penalty under the table, the fine amount is $100. So there is a flat amount of fined applied to every offense within the bylaw that is not an additional or a separate specified penalty that is a different amount within that table. So it's just in that first paragraph under schedule A. Aaron, did you want to add anything to that, though?
Oh, I think, I think you, you hit it there, is, is that if, you know, in specific to the golfing question, if, if an officer came across a person who was golfing, you know, they give some education on, on doing that, if they deemed it necessary to issue a ticket, or whatever those circumstances are, something like that would be a specified penalty of $100, and they have to give them that, that violation notice at the time. And then if they came across a continual problem, or a second, or third, or fourth offense, or something more serious, the officer would then make that discretionary call to, to give them a summons to go to court without an option of, of paying the fine amount, or they could seek a greater punishment, or seek a higher amount under that bylaw.
So, thank, thank you, I think, because I think that answer clarifies a couple of things that councillor Bermansky was looking for in terms of building a structure does not have a specified amount, but it would fall under the, the umbrella undefined amount, not, it's not undefined, it's a blanket, blanket amount. Golf would fall under that, flying a drone would fall under that, as all of, kind of all in one bucket. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, through the chair to councillor Killick, that's absolutely correct. So for, for those offenses that don't have a specified penalty, it is $100, and it's, it's applied across the bylaw.
I, I wonder, Madam Mayor, if I may just jump in here, I want to underscore something that Aaron said, I don't know if everyone fully grasped it. He was talking about requiring a court appearance. The, the enforcing bylaw officer, or, or RCMP officer for that matter, if that's who's doing it, they always have the discretion to require a court appearance, in which case the general provision that, you know, it could be any fine up to $10,000 is, is there. Would that ever happen? I would think very rarely, but it, it, what happens is if, if the enforcing officer feels that the, the person has done something really egregious, that really offends against everything that this, this city is all about, you can require them to go to court, and then let the justice decide what the penalty will be. That's always, but not only in this bylaw. Every bylaw I've ever seen that sets penalties does the same thing. This is not unusual. This is commonly the way bylaw penalty provisions are written. And, and what is, what is good in this case, I believe, is, as pointed out by, by Aaron and Amanda both, that there is that catch-all, that even if a specific penalty for this or that clause of the bylaw is not there, the enforcing officer always has the discretion to say it's a $100 fine. You could always do that. So you have both of those ways to go, depending on circumstances.
Thank you. And if a bylaw officer ever saw my backswing, I'm sure it would qualify for a $100 fine or more.
That's good, that was good information. Councillor Mackay?
Are we in debate, Madam?
Uh, yes, we are, actually.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just gonna, the only thing I'm gonna add is, is I'm perfectly fine with the bylaws presented in first and second readings. I see no other need, I mean, as explained by administration and ledge officer, this is a normal procedural bylaw, a, a normal procedural justice under the way we can enforce our bylaws. It's the same whether we're talking about the parks bylaw, or any other bylaw that has enforceable sections in it. Certainly in any, any pieces around the delegation of authorities, section 209 of the MGA provides clear guidance as to what the authority of the CAO has and can do, and who he can delegate his decision-making powers down to designated officers. So you couldn't be any more clearer than what you already have in any other thing. So I, I don't see any need to be getting down into the granular sections, and, and so I, I don't see any, I really don't see any need to change the existing first and second reading of the proposed bylaw.
All right, is there anyone else on debate? I think that was it. Councillor Bermansky, anything to close?
Well, I, I guess, I mean, since people got into the things in the lower part, I'll just mention one, for example, unless approved by the CAO, you cannot litter. So why is it written that way? You know, it, it just doesn't make sense to me. The, and then the other thing that I put is the vehicle's only driving in specific areas, it was omitted from the other bylaw. So there is things that people do regularly, and I just want people to feel good in the parks. You know, and what's going to happen is, is when it's not clear, it might be the tone of the conversation with someone, or someone will get misdirected by one of these, just because the, the choice is up to the officer to do what they want, essentially, because it's not clear for them, for them as well as the people. So I think we've worked hard, if they've worked three years on this bylaw, to me, it should be, you know, it should be tight and concise. So I just expected a, a solid bylaw that people could be content with for the next number of years that it sits there. So I would like people's support, just clean it up a bit, have a bylaw we're proud of, and, and everybody's happy.
All right, thank you, councillor Bermansky. I will call for the vote now. Voting's closed. And that motion fails with councillor Bermansky, oops, sorry, and councillor Hughes in favor, and everyone opposed. So we're back to third reading, if somebody wants to make that motion. Yeah, that's good, yep. Go ahead.
That bylaw 07/2022 be read a third time.
Anything?
No, I, I think first, all the conversations was in the first reading, and the second reading, and, and just in the previous discussions. So I, I don't believe I'll have anything right now at this time, but I, I'll leave it open to other councillors to add.
Sure, I see councillor Jolly wants to jump in.
Thank you. I just want to thank administration, the quality of work through this whole process has been exceptional, and I, I'm really proud of this bylaw that really needed updating. So, you know, thank you to Amanda, thank you to Diane and, and your entire team.
Awesome. Anything to close then?
No, I, I just echo councillor Jolly's. I, I appreciate all the effort and, and work in, in modernizing a bylaw, and I'm waiting for the penalty one, the 1976 one, that still identifies us as town of St. Albert.
Make a motion. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion passes by majority with councillor Bermansky and Hughes opposed. All right, that was 9.2. We had no emergent items to add to the agenda. Oh, we did have civic agencies update, and I'm not letting you guys off the hook today, because we did, we skipped it last week. So I'm going to try to pull up my roster, pardon. I feel like we always start with you, councillor Killick. Why don't we go to you, and I'm just pulling up our assignments, but I'll let you start.
Sure. For our EAC meeting on April 28, this was the wrap-up presentation for the climate adaptation plan. As you may recall, city received 650 free hours of consulting time through the Municipal Climate Change Action Centre. The work was facilitated for the city by One Sky Foundation, and St. Albert and Sturgeon County were the two cities that were selected for this work. We reviewed the four main pillars of, of activity, and moving forward with the recommendations. It was identified that most of the recommendations coming out of that could be accommodated within the regular work plans of the city, without any additional requirements, so that's good. Most of it was policy work that could be incorporated, so that was, that was very good. At that meeting, we had one resident attend, and the Gazette attended, so that was nice to see the resident attend, and always good to have the Gazette there to be able to report out on the progress. We kept the meeting short, because it was the night of the volunteer meeting, and I, I would say the, we ended on a high note, because one of the committee members brought forward an idea to have a garbage cleanup day with the EAC members as a first in face-to-face meeting, and we're going to do that on Monday the 9th. And what better way to have a good face-to-face meeting than picking up garbage? So, very, very good on that front, so.
Okay, thank you. So that was EAC. I've got my list now in front of me. So alphabetically, Alberta Capital Region Waste Water Commission, councillor Mackay?
Yeah, we met on April 22nd, but just then through general kind of commission business, the only item of interest that I'll bring forward to council is, is that we are in, the Alberta Capital Waste Water Commission is in discussions with Air Products Servicing around creating a partnership to supply them with the first ever in the region, while the first ever for us. There is already an ongoing project with Goldbar, but we will be providing them gray water to help run a hydrogen plant that's being built in northeast part of St. Albert. So that's big news from Alberta Capital Region Waste Water Commission.
Awesome. And we have a tour date set, I feel like.
Yeah, I believe right now we're tentative, we're looking at sometime two, two dates, one in July, and then a fallback date into September.
Awesome. Thank you for that. All right. Arts Development Advisory Committee is yours, councillor Bermansky.
So we had quite a long meeting, quite a lot of things going on. It was shown to us how to preserve specific quilts and art, and there was discussion about a lot of the art projects in the city, and I noticed in our service report going forward, we talked about public art, but we didn't talk about, you know, maintaining it and replacing it, you know, as it deteriorates through the years. So we discussed Saturday at the market, you know, I guess it would be a mural, I guess, mural, mosaics is what you'd call it on the side of the building, that needs to be replaced and removed, the plow shears, and so there's a lot of, lot of art that needs repair at this point in time, so they're getting quotes on, on that. They also have the, the art that is on the one side of the one building downtown, which one's that one? They also have the, the art that is, um, on the one side of the one building downtown, which one's that one? Okay, so the young girl holding the flowers, I forget the name of it, sorry. And we do have the, the, um, actual artist rendering of that too. And they were talking about a place that could be possibly placed in the city. Uh, we went through the Young Artist Legacy Awards and so there was three of those presented. We talked about the High Energy, which is the new arts that are going into the art gallery this week. And that's all the young artists. So it's a hundred students with a hundred and thirty pieces that will be showing. So that's something to look forward to. The Arden Theater, um, for all the events that they've had recently, everybody's been making a lot of money at their events. Out Loud, twenty-five thousand dollars, the Ukrainian event, seventy thousand dollars. Hawkeye Workmen sold out and that was an amazing evening. The Arden Theater was packed. They talked about Potter's Guild back last week for Friday and Saturday, and then the Art Walk coming this Thursday night. So no shortage of art stuff going on, so.
That's true.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Kilic, back to you for Community Service Advisory Committee.
Yeah, C S A C met April twenty-sixth. We kicked off the meeting with a presentation from Marnie Lee on the Ukrainian family support. It was just really great to hear all of the, the different committees in support of nonprofit groups, Food Bank, Newcomers Association, the library, uh, et cetera, et cetera, that are ready and willing and able to provide support to Ukrainian families coming to, to St. Albert. It was really heartwarming to hear that. We, primary activity of the committee, we reviewed the, uh, ad hoc community events, uh, funding requests, two of those. And, uh, we also reviewed six community capital project requests. Again, it was great presentations from very dedicated group of volunteers, uh, seeking funding from the city. And those will be moving forward to, the recommendations will be moving forward to C S L C. We decided not to have any face-to-face meetings. But again, that's good news because two members of the, uh, committee are expecting babies and they want to be home with their babies. So we also ended that meeting on a high note, but, uh, we're not meeting, we're not meeting face-to-face.
Okay, interesting. Counselor Jolly, anything on Edmonton Global that you wanted to report for that meeting that? Um, I think council already got a, a kind of a slot on it.
Yeah, 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 Christian said that slot.
Again, I appreciate you titting that. Counselor Mackay, you have some upcoming E M R B stuff, but I think that's not there yet. It's Counselor, Counselor Broadhead's turn with, uh, the Audit and Finance Committee. I'm going alphabetical. Counselor Broadhead.
Well, for the Audit and Committee, our meeting, uh, is held quarterly and it's next Thursday.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's right, in my calendar. Would you like to do M R S P?
Yes, I would. So we did meet on, uh, uh, the first meeting actually of a, of a new constituted, uh, standing committee. And we met on March twenty-fifth and, uh, basically it was just an organization meeting, getting new members, uh, up to speed. We had to appoint a, a new chair, which is Mayor Bob Young from the City of the Duke. Counselor Dave Anderson from St. John County is the vice chair. And, uh, then it was just really over great going through updates in relation to some of the, uh, work that were, is currently proceeding. Solid Waste Collaborative and also the Stormwater Collaborative. And, uh, then we kind of, uh, just had some perspectives in relation to, uh, some of the types of, uh, presentations we'd be interested in and receiving as part of the committee. And, uh, it was some around, um, waste energy, plastics, uh, implementation of E P R strategies across, uh, not only Canada, but in Europe and any other success stories. So, uh, that was pretty much made up the first meeting of the M R S P.
Awesome. Counselor Broadhead, I feel like there's a bunch on E M T S C. We really need a new name.
So, uh, many times, uh, it seems this is my life, but, uh, so we meet, uh, formally, um, with the, um, we have three committees. We have the Audit and Finance Committee, we have the, um, Human Resource and Compensation Committee. And then, of course, we have the board meeting. I sit on the board and on the, uh, H R and Compensation Committee. Both meetings were held this past month. And, uh, we are, um, so the, um, H R and Comp Committee was held on, uh, Wednesday, the thirteenth, and the board meeting was held the following week on the twenty-first. Yeah, and, uh, we just continue to do the work of the, uh, of the commission, standing up, um, the organizational structure and doing the business of developing the, uh, the service plan going forward. It's interesting insofar as when you, when you create something from nothing, how, how involved it is to, to build it over time. And, uh, and so, uh, we have, um, challenges that come our way all the time. Not the least of which is, uh, is educating new council members from eight different municipalities. Because they haven't been here for the last ten years like some have been, uh, through the development of the, um, commission model. And so we have to just bring them up to speed in terms of where it's at. So, uh, yep, that's where we're at. And today I had to leave at four-thirty because I had a meeting with Minister Mackay. Both the, the C E O and myself, we met with him and brought him up to date with the work that is being done and invited him to, uh, a public event that shall be announced shortly in June.
And you know what, you're next with Edmonton Salutes.
So Edmonton Salutes, uh, I sit on the, uh, both on the Salutes Committee, but also on the, um, Membership and Orientation Committee. And, uh, we built a new orientation package, uh, and we met on the, uh, fourteen, fourteenth of April. And, uh, yeah, so it's, it's interesting because we have not only, uh, elected members from around the region, but also citizen and business members from, uh, the city of Edmonton. And it's a unique, uh, orientation challenge for each individuals. So, yeah, it's an ongoing, um, work, uh, supporting the military in the region and one that I find, uh, very fulfilling for me personally.
Awesome. Okay, next I have Counselor Hughes, um, with the Edmonton Waste Minimization Advisory Committee.
We met.
I heard that. I talked to Counselor, um, Tombs from Sturgeon County. Said you were very engaged, so it was good meeting?
Sure, it was our first meeting, so it was exciting. I thought I'd missed somebody, but it was our first meeting. Um, and Counselor Tombs was elected chair. I nominated her, success. And, um, yeah, so she's, uh, now the chair. And there wasn't really, it was just sort of getting things set up to begin with and just giving everybody a general briefing of what was happening. But just as on the roundtable, I thought something was interesting. And just, just general information, uh, for the council is that, um, so I think it was St. John County, could be wrong. It's on the side of the city, I'm pretty sure. And, um, they put an R O I for who would like to pick up their garbage for the waste to energy stuff because they said every week they're getting people that were approaching them for waste to energy. And so they put an R O I saying, who would be interested in it? And they got no responses, which I thought was interesting. But it also tells you that maybe the person using the garbage, if someone was interested in taking it. So, just letting you know. That was it. But also that when they actually put it out there, instead of getting all these people coming and approaching him every time when it, you know, when he actually hit the road, no one actually stepped up and submitted a proposal, which I thought was interesting. Um, that was about it.
Thank you. Uh, we've got nothing, we had no emergency management, Counselor Kilic did E A C homeland.
Yeah, we've had, uh, two board meetings and one governance committee meeting since, uh, the last update. So, uh, we did approve our audited financial statements, so clean audit again. Covid's continuing to be a challenge. Outbreaks are popping up, um, regularly, you know, I, uh, we're working closely with A H S to, to make sure that we're keeping our residents as safe as possible. Yes, that's, that's going well.
Awesome. And there was, there has, oh, Counselor Bermanaski, was there an intercity forum on social policy? It's, you know, last month, no? Okay. Uh, there has been no internal audit, but it is scheduled policing.
Yay, it's like we haven't talked enough about policing, but.
We could talk about the conference.
So, yeah, I'm gonna talk about the conference, but first we did have another meeting last, uh, April twenty-sixth, the last Tuesday. Uh, we had a presentation by the Alberta R C M P Professional Responsibilities Unit, which is basically their, uh, professional standard. Uh, they, it was actually informative because it talked about how it meshes with our public complaints director and the kind of the role that, uh, um, the local detachment plays when, uh, there's complaints of, uh, service or I guess they call them codes of conduct. And, uh, unfortunately, it's becoming quite, um, busy within our detachment as each, uh, one of the supervisors is carrying a number of, uh, files. So, I mean, that's just, uh, uh, item of interest arising out of that conversation. But then this past weekend, I attended the Alberta Association of Police Governance that we hosted at, uh, the Kinsman Rodeo Ground, the conference center there. It was, uh, actually a very, uh, informative, uh, conference being as it was. Probably, I did attend one or two in my previous life, but, uh, sitting with, uh, police advisory committee members from, um, uh, R C M P detachments and also, uh, police commissions, municipal police commissions from, uh, of every municipal police service was represented. So there was over a hundred, uh, actual attendees and, uh, we had some of our administration there as well. Uh, presentations ranged around, um, just kind of, uh, we had keynote speakers talking about, um, reimagining what's possible, sort of like what's, what's on the, what's happening in relation to, uh, some of the, uh, issues that are gonna be, police governing bodies are gonna be faced with, and that really aligns with what's facing policing in general across, um, North America. Uh, there was informative information around roadside breathalyzer testing and they actually kept the, uh, breathalyzer there for the, uh, gala, uh, in the banquet in the evening. And it was probably the most popular, uh, a popular display other than, um, Mike Kilic, uh, kissing booth at the, uh, local, um, local fair. But I can tell you, it was extraordinarily popular. There was, uh, everybody was, uh, having a drink and then running up to see what they would, uh, blow. And, uh, as usual, everybody was quite surprised. And it was actually, we had, uh, our local microbrewery's Endeavor and Half Hitch and then Black Diamond were there. They were providing the, um, the substance that was being tested. So it's actually very interesting. And of course, uh, there was, it, there was obviously limits in relation to that. But the keynote speaker was, and if you have not heard this gentleman, he's a constable, started with the R C M P in Surrey and moved over to Calgary Police Service. And he's, uh, started a program called Bullying Ends Here. And he provided a, uh, thirty, almost an hour presentation right off, uh, just like a pure testimonial talking about, um, his life and the fact that he lived in a basement from the age of five to fifteen, uh, due to abusive parents. And it was, uh, pretty, uh, amazing, uh, and heart-wrenching. And, uh, I don't, I, he just basically started talking and ended an hour later. It was unbelievable. And then the next day, and I'll be quick on this one, we, we had, uh, updates from the Solicitor General. And, uh, they were, they sent new people basically. And, uh, they said, if we can't really answer any of your questions, we'll get back to you. So, um, it's, it shows you maybe the state of flux that Solicitor General's department is in and, uh, justice. So, I mean, it's actually, um, uh, not really that good. The, uh, the afternoon, there was an outstanding presentation on body warrant cameras, the evidence and the impacts and some of the challenges that, uh, agencies will face with, uh, I mean, right now Edmonton requires two million terabytes of, terabytes of storage. So, I mean, Sean knows what that is, I didn't know what that meant. But, uh, it is a, it's a lot. It's a lot. And then you have to get into policies and procedures around what do you redact? So if you walk into a person's house, who do you, and you're not dealing with everybody in the house, you have to redact everybody else. So it's quite challenging. Uh, we also then finished off the day with, uh, SCAM Unit, which is the Safer Communities and Neighborhoods. And, uh, the presenter just talked about, you know, like, um, homes that are obviously, uh, of concern, properties, yeah, of concern in our community. So anyways, I've gone on, it was, uh, a little bit longer than I intended to, but it was a very worthwhile conference. And kudos to members of our, uh, policing committee that put it on, uh, Ian and, um, Anderson and, uh, Todd Welsh were there, as well as our public complaints director and two other members of, uh, Bravo, they did a great job. It was very well-run and nothing but good comments by, uh, uh, everybody attending. So that was a little longer than I intended, but it was very.
No, I think it's important to point out that that conference happened in St. Albert just this weekend, so. All right, uh, we have had no quasi judicial, no recreation cost sharing. Seniors Advisory, Counselor Hughes, anything going on there?
Nope, that, we did meet, um, nothing that's worth, um, taking time up. I, I would say that we did have a very wholesome discussion about having a distinct mandate for the committee. And in the end, like, I know that in, we had the committee, the whole, and there's discussion of, um, some committees that don't have specific job functions, um, how could we create one? I don't think that the committee on its own is going to be able to find that job function. So I think that at the, at the end of the conversation, it was really put back onto the city to say, with your priorities, with what you have, what could we do? I mean, we're not in the position to start creating new grants for seniors or new grants for anybody at this point. Money's pretty tight all the way around. So, um, that, we, there was a long discussion about that. And in the end, they, they don't just happen to know what could be a job function, but they still would like to provide input into, um, wherever they can, the policies or anything like that. They just don't have, um, an obvious solution to the challenge that we presented in front of them. So with that, they will be meeting again, just so you know.
Thank you for that. We have not had a I A C meeting in a while. And Counselor Kilic, I feel like you might've had to miss the Sturgeon River Watershed Alliance because of the downtown meeting, right? Has there been another one since?
And I missed that meeting and, uh, the next upcoming meeting on Sturgeon Watershed is, uh, is May fifth. And I may miss that one as well. And the North Saskatchewan Watershed, I think, has, uh, contacted your office, Mayor, for trying to set up a, uh, a meeting time slot on council's agenda to, to a quick update on their activities, just a quick presentation.
I haven't got that yet, but when I do that, that would be, that'd probably be good.
Yeah.
And Counselor Kilic, please don't feel bad about being in conflict with other things. It happens.
It happens.
Finally, Hughes Advisory.
On my mic's already on. We didn't have quorum for our start time, um, but the group did decide, uh, that they were happy to meet informally to, to hear a presentation about, uh, potential youth mental health hub. Um, so it, it's gonna be interesting to see how that develops. That's an outside group that's doing that as they, they meet with stakeholders. So they're meeting with the, the city and, um, a lot of groups in, in St. Albert, so that's exciting to see. Um, and also I believe I'm supposed to mention, um, kind of education, um, stuff. So I did complete the F C M's climate, climate leadership course for elected officials. So, um, really interesting course. I know, uh, Mayor Hare, you took that, uh, a few years ago. I definitely recommend it for anyone. Final paper was, is giving flashbacks to my M B A. But, uh, really, really great information. And then as a follow-up, um, they kind of invited me to, uh, a presentation about the, the F C M grants, um, kind of in this realm. And so I was able to invite a member of staff to come with me. So thanks to, to Megan for, for attending those. Um, some information about, you know, possible grant opportunities for the St. Albert going forward.
Awesome. All right, that's all the updates that I have. And so, uh, it's now time for information request notes, motion and announcements. I'll open it up, but I might even start, um, this is for you, Mr. Hiltz. We had a resident e-mail about his concerns with school buses parking in residential streets. I, I kind of have two things to bring up. First of all, the response back that we got was to asking the resident to call municipal enforcement, which is, is fine, but that leaves council in the dark of what, what the, what the answer is. So we did not know what the answer was, are school buses allowed to park in residential streets? So in the future, it'd be nice if you could get a quick answer and then say, if there's any further questions, please call me. And then, but then the resident emailed me back saying that, I have it here, he did call municipal enforcement. I see, quicker response, they were very pleasant to deal with. Unfortunately, they could do nothing because large school buses are parked legally. As I mentioned in my previous email, I believe my concerns are not about legality, but about, they're legitimate about safety issues. So I'm, I'm just wondering, I guess the question I have is if you know if the large school buses are prohibited from parking on residential streets in other municipalities? And if not, I'll make that an IR.
You know, I think that we'd appreciate an IR, but I can say in Beaumont, this is a similar issue. And school buses were allowed to park in residential streets. They still have to meet the 72-hour parking requirements. Blah, 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 they have to be so far away from driveways and everything else. So they were allowed there as well, but it also, the same complaints were coming in. So, but there, an IR probably would be good and can give you a more robust answer on that.
Okay, perfect, can, so do I have to type that in or did you guys capture it? Okay, thanks.
David seems like he's going to want to weigh in here.
I just wanted to add, I know for a fact that in Edmonton, there's also a length restriction. If you're beyond a certain length, you're not allowed, not even for five minutes on the City of Edmonton residential street.
So maybe add that into part of, into the IR a little bit about options and length restriction might be one of them. Thank you. Anyone else have any IRs? Notice, motion, announcements? Okay.
Just a question?
Yeah, yeah, questions are good.
Yeah, so I don't want to make this anything more than it is, but so the detour is now in place, closing off Billings Road at the Walmart. When does Jensen Lakes, Jensen Gate Road get opened up?
It should be open by now.
I wasn't this morning.
Yeah, through the Chair, the Counselor Broadhead, my conversations with engineering last week were that it still hasn't been opened by Melkor. And they have been asking, but it's getting really close to the timeline where we have to build the roundabout. So timing is getting kind of tight right now, but at this point, it has not been opened. And engineering is continuing to have dialogue with Melkor.
I know the residents are just anxious.
Yeah, and we were just waiting for streetlights and they're up.
So.
You know what, Councilor Broadhead, we're going to see probably soon tomorrow at the UDIC HBA meeting. Let's ask her.
Okay, very good then.
All right, okay, I need a motion to go in camera for 13.2. Who's that, Councilor Mackay, go ahead.
The council moving camera to have a confidential dialogue with the Chief Administrative Officer pursuant to Section 24, 1A of the Freedom of Information and Privacy Act.
All right, call for the vote. Balloting's closed and that passes unanimously.